We have an amended notice of meeting and agenda supervisors. Before we go any farther, can you get the noise coming from and? It was Kim, okay. Meeting agenda Polk County Supervisors Tuesday, January 19th. Doing the amended agenda 2021. And we need a call the order, receipt of evidence. So clerk, do you have a receipt of evidence?
The county Board of Supervisors January 19th meeting notice and agenda was posted in the Government Center Building in two places, posted in the county website on January 8th, 2021, and was published in a legal newspaper on January 11th, 2021. In addition, on Friday, January 8th, 2021, the Office of the County Clerk distributed copies of such notice of meeting along with any available proposed resolutions to supervisors via email or mail. The notice of amended agenda was posted in the Government Center, posted on the county website, and copies of such notice of meeting were distributed to the supervisors via media, supervisors and media via email on Friday, January 15th, 2021.
And Corporation Counsel, is that a proper notice?
It does comply with the open meetings document.
Roll call.
Brad Olson.
Here.
Luke Rowdy.
Here.
Kate Wornell.
Here.
Chris Pelson.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Ruck.
Here.
Michael Pritchard.
Here.
Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Kim O'Connell. All right. Amy Wilkman. Amy Middleton.
Here.
Dave Hoop.
Yeah.
Fran Duncanson.
Here.
Russ Arcand.
Here.
John Bonner Price.
Here.
Joe Demmeling.
Here.
All 15 supervisors are present.
Hey, Dan's gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number five, we'll just have a raise our hands if we get to a situation on conflicts of interest. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I approve move for approval as presented.
You have a second.
Second.
Joe. Any discussion? Supervisor Duncanson?
Yes, I would like to suggest that Agenda Item Number 20 be tabled. I have been informed that there was a letter received from an attorney representing the friends of the Stour Seven Lake Trail Group that was to be distributed to the supervisors. I have not received a copy of that. I don't know if anyone else has or not. But I think that supervisors should be in receipt of that information and the board should discuss that perhaps in a closed session before any decisions are made.
Well, I'm gonna refer that to Mulia, but I could tell you that, I'm sure the clerk can verify this because I actually read every single email and there was groups of emails and I did read that email, so I know all the supervisors did receive that. So it was received.
We did confirm because there was a question that it did go out around seven, seven something yesterday. Last evening. 7:08 PM is when it was sent out to all the supervisors.
And it was sent to every supervisor?
Every supervisor.
And it was verified.
There were several, several comments bunched together and sent out in batches and it was in one of those.
Yeah.
And also, you know, I don't know if this is an appropriate time to mention it or not, but I did notice that with a lot of public comments getting forward, there was like a lot of chain of comments and it was easy to miss some of them because they weren't sent.
Just a little louder last week.
Really individually, part of a larger big group.
We could talk about that later, right now it wouldn't be.
Okay.
Any other discussion about the agenda? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very unanimous. Matters offered for adoption on the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Seconded by Supervisor Olson. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, anyone in the other room?
No.
Kyle, all you gotta do is, can Kim hear us, right? So Kyle, I guess what you got, you got your thumbs up, okay. Thank. Um, okay, so you have a person, a second on the consent agenda, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, very unanimous. Okay, we have public comments now. Um, is that Chad up there?
It is, Mr. Chair. We have public comments ready whenever you are.
All right, and the public comments, just to give everyone a fair chance, what we did is we broke it up by user groups. And however you guys want to rotate the user groups, we will try to stick to the 30 minutes. So some of the user groups want to make sure, maybe if they have the same thing to say is to kind of make sure you get the person you want saying it. When started off, Chad, to make sure we get a name and their address or the community they live in.
Paulette Adair.
And who are they representing, what group, user group?
Equestrians.
Okay. Where do you live, ma'am?
My name is Paulette Adair. I am from Luck. I am here again as an advocate for equestrian trail opportunities. After years of planning and debate, investment in studies, equestrian access has been approved by our board multiple times, only to be stonewalled by the DNR. It is now evident by the board's approvals and agreements with the DNR that the requirements needed to move forward with this plan have been met. We have proven horse people need and deserve safe, enjoyable areas to recreate, a scarce opportunity in our county. Trail sharing with equestrians is not new or uncommon and can be done safely. Much documentation has been submitted. Both our board and the DNR have had to endure constant pressure, intimidation and threats from a small but local group actively opposed to any new trail users. It was so disappointing after all the years of our trail system still being held hostage by this closed-minded group. It is unfortunate their misguided perceptions and prejudices, even threatening legal action could be more influential than facts, reason, and the desire of the majority to open our trails to more users. These difficult people are the reason this plan does not move forward, not because of its feasibility. Bullying and intimidation should never be awarded with results. Now finally, a plan has been negotiated for at least limited equestrian use to the less popular months of mid-November through October, mid-October through November, when diminishing daylight and unpleasant weather conditions are likely. Shorter days will limit trail use by most employed or school-aged people. Realistically, about 12 days of trail access is all we'll get. Even more unfair is that our use of the trail or underuse will be further scrutinized, possibly resulting in even this limited access being revoked. It is likely individuals who oppose horses on the trail will continue their efforts to exclude us. I hope plans will be made for surveillance of all users, including trail cams and official documentation of our use, as well as all others. This will help discourage deceit and the possible harassment of our group. Despite these challenges, given the chance, we intend on making the most of this opportunity. We realize that any time on the trail is a significant victory and will certainly be a catalyst for change and improved quality of life. It will be our goal to gain trust and acceptance of fellow trail users and work to expand our recreational opportunities. On behalf of myself and fellow horse people, I would like to extend our sincere gratitude, to the board and advisors, community members, and everyone who has given their time, talent, and diligence required to finally get us to the point. We ask for continued support of this and future projects, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
And biking, walking.
Hello, my name is Ann Miller and I live in the town of Osceola, about half a mile from the trail. I'm here to ask you to vote no on Resolution 0221, adding snowmobiles and equestrians to the Stour Seven Lakes State Trail. One of my concerns with this proposal is the safety of the plan. According to Tool Designs, various options for the trail, adding snowmobiles and equestrians to the trail are the least safe options. As a person who bikes on the trail three to four times a week, I know that often, I often startle walkers as I come upon them and announce my presence. So what is gonna happen when I approach and announce myself to a horse and their rider? This is a safety hazard to both the biker and the equestrian. This past year, the busiest day I saw on the trail was during peak fall colors in October, right during the time of year you hope to put equestrians on the trail. So during this time, there is a possibility for bike after bike to need to pass the equestrians. And as someone who walks on the trail in the winter, the addition of snowmobiles is disconcerting. I do not access the trail in Amory, but at Lotus Lake or night, where there is a plan for rustic trail for the first two miles from Amory, while there is no plan, safety plan for the area that I walk. I would also like to address the economic impact of the trail. You'll find providing a large variety of trails will bring even more people to our county. Silent sports enthusiasts also like to spend money on lodging, food, and beverages. Currently, there are already 360-plus miles of snowmobile trails, according to the Polk County website. Of these, three of them are also rail-to-trail trails, the Gandy, the Cattail, and the Sawmill. The fourth rail to trail is the Stour. Is it really necessary that all four of these trails be motorized? Please leave the Stour as the only non-motorized state trail in this region. It is a special resource for people not just in our community, but across the whole area. Thank you.
Thank you. Barb Jarco. Snow skiing.
Hi, Barbara Jarco, Town of Alamo River. Um, I'd just like to say that I'm in support of the resolution. Um, I'm a mom, small business owner, pretty busy, but when I have some time, I actually do both cross-country skiing and snowmobiling. Um, you know, I've just, I think it'd be good for both snowmobiles and skiers. Um, I've used the Boston Branch Trails multiple times in the past. Um, I've also done a lot of snowmobiling from Amory towards Wanderoo's and in that specific area, going on all those roads back there, it's actually quite scary. Um, I think it's pretty dangerous there and I think it's just a real safety issue. Um, you know, also, more importantly though, the idea and the plans that you guys have set to create some new ski trails back over by the Didi Kennedy area, I think would just be fantastic. It's a beautiful area, great trails, and I think that would just be fantastic. Um, great opportunities, love doing both, enjoy doing all of that. And I just wanna thank you all for listening and I hope that you all will vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd Miller, snowmobile.
Good evening. It's been a long 14-plus years on the Stour Plan. I thank everyone for their hard work. Tonight, we can put the last piece in place. Resolution 02-21 is a good compromise for the original master plan that allowed almost any use. With the latest master plan that was approved by the board and approved by the DNR, if this resolution passes tonight, we can move forward. This resolution already has passed the Environmental Committee 4 to 0. Will I be able to ride my motorcycle, winter ATV, UTV, summer ATV, UTV on the trail? No, we are only addressing snowmobiling and horses. Is it safe compromise? Myself and the Snowmobile Council believe it is. We have the Gandy that has snowmobile, frozen ground, ATV, UTV, and non-motorized use. We have the Cattail, the Sawmill Trail with year-round motorized with non-motorized use. To my knowledge, none of these current trails have had a non-motorized, motorized accident with each other. Let's pass the resolution tonight and move forward and make this a great trail for more usage. Thank you. Todd Miller, Frederick Scott.
Thank you.
Ken Garen, Paramount. And state where you live, please, ma'am.
Hi, everyone. I'm from Alamo Township. Thank you for the time this evening to talk.
Excuse me. We're getting a lot of, we're getting a lot of feedback with the noise down there with moving papers and around. If you just go ahead and state your name again.
Sure, I'm Kim Garen. I'm from Alden Township and I appreciate your time today. During the December meeting, Lisa Erickson and I gave public comment in support of nonpartisan voting districts. She's out of state today and isn't able to be here, but in her written comment today, she begins, "I voted Republican my whole life." Well, I voted Democratic my whole life. And we share our views and our story because we agree that it's up to all of us to work together on fair and competitive elections. We agree that Wisconsin will be far better off when we take the politics out of the process of creating voting districts. Voting districts determine what's on the ballot and who can, who you can vote for. Districts have to be redrawn after every 10 years after the census. They're about the same population size and this is called redistricting. And this process relates really only to state and national elections, but not to local elections. We've had problems for a long time in Wisconsin around the redistricting process because all state legislators can't agree and they can't work together. Um, both parties are responsible and as a result, Wisconsin has spent millions in the courts and on attorneys. But about 40 years ago, Iowa took politics and politicians out of the process. There is other ways to do this. Iowa determines their voting districts without regard to the voting history of the area or the residents of current elected officials. It's based on current county and municipal boundaries. A partisan approach behind carving out voting districts. People put all of their opponents in safe seats. They cram as many of them as possible into a small number of districts. And then they spread their own supporters over a larger number of districts, diluting the vote of their opponents and increasing the odds that their party will win elections. And when this happens, we all lose. Voters are turned off. Sprawling, odd-sized districts create distance and confusion. Safe districts are less competitive. People in office are less accountable to voters. And legislative gridlock costs money. Your meeting packet includes a non-binding advisory referendum. There's no fiscal or significant legal impact. The purpose of the referendum is to give an opportunity for voters in Polk County to answer a question about whether or not we should create a nonpartisan redistricting process for the state of Wisconsin. There's also been tremendous attention to this around the state. Um, more than 50 counties have passed a resolution in support of nonpartisan redistricting. And in many counties, on nearly 30, the voters have gone on to express their preference for nonpartisan districting. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you.
Kim Metter, equestrian.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Kim Metter and I am from Eureka Township. Um, I am a local horse enthusiast and advocate for the, advocate for the multi-use Stour Seven Lakes State Trail. Um, I would just like to read a letter from the Wisconsin Horse Council regarding use of equestrians and snowmobiles on the Stour Lakes Trail. Uh, dear ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the Wisconsin Horse Council Trails Program, I'd like to express our support for including multi-use on the Stour Seven Lakes State Trail Master Plan, including equestrians and snowmobiles. The Wisconsin Horse Council advocates and supports multi-use trails wherever it is feasible. The Stour Seven Lakes State Trail is a good candidate for designation as a multi-use trail for several reasons. Many were covered in the master plan presented and already approved by this board. Some of those reasons, to preserve the natural, or excuse me, preserve the rural character of the trail, provide recreational opportunities that complement present trail opportunities in Polk County, and provide recreational opportunities that we are underrepresented in the Polk County trail system. Complement present economic benefits of trails existing in Polk County and provide opportunities for economic development not reflected in the current trail usage. Adding snowmobiles and equestrian use to the trail will not impact any archaeological features as long as the trail is not expanded. Additional funds via trail passes sales from the equestrian users. Connectivity to Cattail State Trail. Equestrian volunteers are good at providing sweat equity as well as funding for the trail improvements and maintenance. Uh, the economic impact with large trucks and trailers pulling into town, people stopping to eat at local establishments, sales of equine equipment and supplies. Volunteers are willing to help with education on trail safety with the addition of multi-use. Also, pamphlets are available to place at the trailheads from the Wisconsin Horse Council. Allow local users to place, safely ride off of the roads. As with all trail user groups, trail riding has been a sizable increase as traditional events have been canceled this year. We encourage you to keep the master plan with additional proposed uses that has been presented to the Wisconsin Natural, Department of Natural Resources, and allow equestrians and snowmobiles as valued partners to the Stour Seven Lakes State Trail. Uh, sincerely from Cricket Jewett, and she is the Wisconsin Horse Council Trails Committee Co-Chair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Kate Ellupson. Ellupson. I apologize. Walking, biking. State where you're from, please, ma'am.
My name is Katie Ellupson. I live in the township of Osceola. I'm here today on behalf of Amory Hospital and Clinic. I work as a Community Health Program Manager. Um, every three years, the Polk County Health Department and all three of the county, the medical centers in Polk County, Osceola, St. Croix, and Amory are charged with conducting a community health needs assessment to identify the key priority health areas of the citizens of our county. Largely, for the last many years, the same three have risen to the top, including mental health, substance use, and obesity. The trail stands as a key component to address all of these areas, although it was never intended to do that. There is significant evidence to show how physical activity and is a safe coping mechanism for our emotions and mental health versus using drugs and alcohol. And so what we know is that built environment is a very key piece of how we live our lives. Um, and having a place for children and families to move their bodies is a key way to help the people of Polk County stay fit and active and address all of three of these key areas that have been identified year after year. Um, what I also can tell you is that at Health Partners, we have done a survey called the Family Community Survey every two years for the last six years. And in a survey, families to identify things that are important to them when it comes to getting their families moving and active and barriers to doing so. Uh, what we have found through that survey is that families are most interested in family physical activity. The Stour provides a great place for that in all seasons. Parents also, the number one thing parents also say is they need low-cost places to be active. That's another thing that the Stour can provide. Um, the other two things from this survey, the highest things, is that they want, parents say that the greatest barriers are that they want more walkable and bikeable routes or trails and access to free or low-cost places to be physically active. Again, the Stour provides these opportunities for kids and families. So I encourage you to show the people, kids and families of Polk County, that you care about their health and are actively taking steps to improve our environment, to create safe and accessible options for staying active year round. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Mosner, snow showing, skiing.
Hi, my name is Ken Mosner. Um, I'm a resident of Amory and I live next to the trail and I am opposed to motorized vehicles on the trail. Um, I, I and about five of my other neighbors are all right along the trail as well and we're concerned about the noise factor and speed and safety that will accompany the snowmobiles that will be on the trail. Not necessarily opposed to completely eliminating snowmobiles from other sections of the trail, but I feel that, um, the, you know, trail that's closest to town within a couple of miles, I mean, you know, east side of probably Dresser and Amory are, should be, have a lot more restrictions on noise and speed and safety of that. That trail is pretty narrow along there with steep drop-offs on each side and wetlands and again, close neighbors to probably. So, um, thank you for your time and I appreciate your listening to me.
Thank you.
Doug Johnson, snowmobile.
Thank you, Doug Johnson from Amory. I think it's important that we go over a little bit of timeline stuff on this. Since this particular stretch of railroad right away was first abandoned in 1998, snowmobilers have endeavored to add it to the existing Polk County snowmobile trail system. The property was acquired by the state and in 2003, Polk County entered into a lengthy process to develop a master plan for what was then known as the Amory to Dresser Trail. The DNR requires counties to develop master plans for cooperative state-owned trails. County is required to identify the users. The DNR does not approve the uses. As a result of that process, Polk County Board approved the plan that included motorized and non-motorized trail users in 2004. Following county approval of the 2004 plan, volunteers from local snowmobile and ATV clubs were given permission to prepare the trail for use. Many hundreds of volunteer man-hours were invested in the process. County required the trail to meet state standards. The volunteers completed the work to the satisfaction of the county. Litigation followed, which prevented snowmobilers from using the trail. That litigation was eventually reversed by state legislature and the Natural Resources Board, allowing snowmobiles and others as authorized users of state trails. In the spring of 2018, a subcommittee was identified to assist the county in the redevelopment of the master plan. In the fall of 2018, the recommendations of the subcommittee were approved by the Environmental Services Committee and the County Board. The approved draft was submitted to the DNR. February 2019, the DNR requests more specifics be added to the plan. August 2019, Polk County hires Tool Design Trail Planning Consultant to assist with addressing issues in the master plan identified by the DNR. By July 2020, after many opportunities for public input, the Environmental Services Committee approved the new draft plan and passed it on to the Polk County Board. Polk County Board passed Resolution 2020 and submitted the plan to the DNR. November 2020, after several months of study, the DNR sends a county attorney finding a few concerns. Polk County and the DNR held several meetings in December of 2020, resulting in agreement and Resolution 221. Resolution 221 reaffirms the original master plan approved by the County Board and DNR in 2004 and the latest plan submitted to the DNR in July of 2020. And it has been approved by the DNR with some clarifying edits. Let's get this passed so we can put this issue behind us and move on to other more productive business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Liz Seaver. Snowmobiles.
Hi, my name is Liz Seaver and I own The Mix-Up, which is formerly a home-based bar south of Didi Kennedy, and then I also own a place on Bone Lake in Polk County. I think after going through the last months and dealing with the difficulty of just existing in the world we're living in with COVID, I think the more outdoor activities that we're presenting to people in this county, the absolute better. I think that this resolution is exactly what we need in our part of Polk County where my businesses is located. I would love to see snowmobiles on the Stour Trail. I would love to see snowmobiles on the store trail. In my opinion, this is a win-win for all affected user groups and surrounding businesses. I can't think of a better place to have snowshoeing and cross-country skiing than in the D.D. Kennedy area. I absolutely think it's beautiful and breathtaking and I think many will love it. It will also, opening up this show will also help the neighboring businesses. Generally, people avoid riding snowmobiles on the trails in our part of the county because there's so much road riding. To be completely honest, as a snowmobile rider, it's kind of dumb and it's actually extremely dangerous. This resolution solves that issue. In this day of polarized politics, I do want to commend everybody that has worked on this, that worked so hard on this resolution. This is one of the best compromises I have personally seen presented in a long time. I do believe that is truly a win for everybody and I hope that you will vote yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Brooke Wallen. I can bike and ski.
Hello, my name is Brooke Wallen. I reside in the town of Bone Lake and I am a longtime member of the Friends of Stour Seven Lakes State Trail. The issue before you tonight isn't so much about the seven, the Stour. It's not as much about the Stour as you'd like it to be about the Stour.
Excuse me, Mr. Wallen, could you speak up here a little bit?
Certainly, I'll try. I do have a sore throat.
You might want to stop.
Not a dry throat, I should say. Is this better? Is this better?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Again, my name is Brooke Wallen and this is not so much about the Stour as you would like it to be about the Stour, I'm afraid. The Stour, the board should be working on problems. The Stour in 10 years has not had any problems. The Stour today, like every day since its inception, is open to all users of all shapes and sizes. No matter their age, no matter their ability, from the very youngest of us to the very oldest of us, from the strongest of us to the very weakest of us, this trail provides equal access. The problem that this county should be focusing on lies in our motorsports trails, which are unattractive. They're widely damaged and they're very dangerous. They are so unattractive that the local ATV clubs do not hold events on that trail. They go to a bicycle trail, the Gandy Dancer, in order to have their parades. The equestrians, the horseback riders, have access to the Cattail Trail. That's 18 miles of trail. That's for much longer than six weeks out of the year. They do not embrace that trail and to the best of my knowledge, they have not lifted a finger to do anything on that trail. Is that their fault? Maybe. Maybe it is because that trail is a disaster. That trail is an embarrassment to this county. It is a failed trail. There's basically no horses. There's basically no motorized sporting events. There's basically no community events on that trail at all. The bicyclists that you will see on there, you will never see again. They do not return to that, to that trail for any reason at all. This is why there have been no non-motor and motorized accidents is because non-motorized users, bicyclists, hikers, skiers, et cetera, do not utilize the Cattail Trail. They do not utilize the Sawmill Trail. I'm on the Sawmill Trail every single year. I will go there on a weekend and I will survey that trail to see what's happening on it. I have never seen a bicycle on that trail. Focus on the right things, guys.
Thank you.
Melvin Smith, do you want to speak? All right, that's all we have, Mr. Chair.
All right, there's no other public comment, then we will close public comment. County Board Chair Report.
I have no report this month.
County Administrators Report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Briefly, the pandemic, as you know, continues and it's a daily priority for us here in Polk County Government. We're still committed to delivering those services. But we'll say this regarding the expense. We have spent approximately $715,000 on COVID-related activities and products. I'm happy to report that all but about $150,000 has already been reimbursed to us from the federal or state government. And of the $150,000, we expect nearly all of this to be reimbursed to us before the end of 2021. During the time of the pandemic, the county continues to show economic strength. Sales tax, and at least in this measurement, sales tax collected in 2020 is totaled over $4 million. That represents a 12.7% increase over 2019. So that's good news. Now, there are other challenges, of course, that we always will continue to monitor in terms of unemployment and those types of things. In addition, though, besides sales tax, our Environmental Service Department reports that there have been over 400 sanitary permits granted in 2020. That's a 28% increase. Also 939 land use permits, which is 11% increase over the year before. The county continues to hire quality people that we need in certain areas. One that some of the committees have seen is our CJCC coordinator was hired in Susan Capirelli. She will start working, she has already started working with the CJCC. She held a similar position in Pierce County. I think Tanya may mention this, but the Polk County Health Officer and Health Director has been hired, Jean Schultz. She'll begin on February 8th. So the summary of the hires, we're hiring people we need now. We've got others we're hiring, but those are two that I think are in very important prioritized areas. Finally, you have seen some news reports regarding the Christianson case, the former jailer of Polk County and those cases involved in that. We have been informed on January 11th that the Supreme Court has denied Polk County's request for a hearing. And currently, our Corporation Council, Insurance Defense Council are reviewing the effects of that and ramifications. And at this point, we will wait until we have a fuller understanding of what this means and then I'll report back to you on that at a later time. Until then, Mr. Chair.
Any questions for the administrator on this report? And in the other room chat, are they able to communicate with us? Or are we looking for raising hands or they can, we can hear them? If they have a question, they're going to just bring it up?
Yeah, they can unmute. You can hear us in the A B, correct supervisors?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear us?
We can.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. And item number 11, confirmation of appointments. The "I have none," administrator?
Yeah, oh, nice.
He can throw you off, administrator, now.
County Administrator appointments. We have one that is up for reappointment, Mike Pritchard. Who, and I believe this is wrong on the agenda. It's actually the Indian Head Federated Library System. The five-year appointment, Mr. Pritchard has served on that well and he had, would like to, and I agree, we asked him to continue with that appointment.
Do we need to vote on that, Corporation Council?
Yes.
So we need a motion. John's. We have a second in this room?
Second.
Second by Wardall. Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All the same signs unanimously carried. COVID update, is that Tanya?
It might be easier for me to see the board up here. Okay, well, so a lot of news happening today even with regard to vaccination. So I just want to mention a couple of things before we get into vaccination. Today, the governor did reorder a public health emergency and also extended the max mandated mask requirements. So we're going to be wearing them for another couple of months. And then our numbers, our positive cases are low right now. We think that people are probably just going in to be tested because they need to be tested to either do the seven-day shorter quarantine where you have to have a test or they've got some other reason why they're being tested. So we're not seeing the numbers of tests come in like we had been a couple of months ago. So with that, it's kind of a blessing for us because we've been able to switch over to vaccine planning. This is quite a large undertaking. I don't know if anybody ever realized in our department that we would be planning for such a large mass clinic event. But we have taken it on and we are working with our three health centers to have a mass clinic. And what that means is we'll hold a drive-up or drive-through style mass clinic. Lots of coordination with our highway department, law enforcement, medical providers, people who can vaccinate. The plan is that we will be able to do 18 vaccinations every seven minutes and we will just keep rolling people through. It will be held here in Balsam Lake. And we are holding our first one next week. So we ordered our first batch of vaccine today. Couple of the caveats with that are that we don't know what we will get for a vaccine. We put in our, kind of our wish list of what we think we can vaccinate next week. We are aiming for 1,000 vaccinations and we don't know what we'll get. So it's based on how, with the 65-plus group rolling out to be eligible next week, we've seen an increase in demand in our phone calls asking, people are very interested in receiving the vaccine. So today, we did some changes to our website. So this that they're showing right here is you go to the Polk County main webpage. That green box is what will give you the most up-to-date information. So we're wanting people to go to the county website, the health department website, our COVID page, our Facebook page, and we will be updating that information. So you can read, if there is an update for the day, we're putting it in there and posting it as soon as we get it because the information is changing so fast. You scroll down, the new information that we worked on today is a form that you can complete if you are interested in receiving vaccine. And it doesn't matter what your age group is or what your profession is. If you're interested in receiving it, you complete the form and we then take that information and categorize the information based on eligibility groups that the state releases to us. Obviously, the age 65-plus group or 65 and better group that we're referring to, it is blowing up tonight. We've had it up for two and a half hours and I think we've already got 600 responses of people requesting vaccine. Most of them are in that 65 or better category. The others are healthcare providers. So we are reaching the people as fast as we can, categorizing based on the criteria that the state is rolling out for us and just asking people to be patient because we're not forgetting about everybody, anybody. We just have to follow the rules that the state's giving us and then also work within the restraints of the vaccine available to us. So our teams are ready. We've got good partnerships with the hospitals. We've also partnered with Burnett County, scarce, very scarce resources up there. So we're doing some trading out that we would allow their residents to come through our lines. They will provide us vaccinators and other staff to help us manage that because it's a little bit complicated to find. I think we need about 120 volunteers a day or two days a week to make this all happen. So it's a very large undertaking, but we feel like we are prepared to do it. So if you're hearing out in the community that people are wanting the vaccine, point them to this website. They can hover anywhere on this blue. They should be able to hover on there. There's a spot and then there, before it was working, where you hover anywhere on the blue and you can click right into that survey. That goes directly to our office and we begin processing right away. Any questions?
Johnny's already got his shot.
I got mine last Saturday in Tannure, Arizona. Put my sister in and there was actually 10 nurses there. Six women and four guys and there was a waiting list.
So it's a two series shot. We all know that, right? So you probably do the first one and in 21 or 28 days, you go back for the second. Depends on the manufacturer of the vaccine. We don't know what vaccines we're getting until the weekend after we submit. So we'll find out this weekend what we're getting and then we need to be ready to administer. Both, both of the vaccines have some pretty different criteria in how you administer them and mix them and store them.
Is this true that Wisconsin is where, I've heard they used to be one of the top ones ahead of Indiana and some of the Midwest and now for some reason we're behind in availability for vaccine?
I don't know what the formulas are for the rollout to the states. I think we get, the state of Wisconsin gets about 70,000 doses a week is what I have heard. And I don't know how that gets distributed.
It seems somehow like things are really political. I lived down there in Pinellas County and they were just finishing up their third chapter in Maricopa County when Phoenix is in, hadn't started.
I guess the other thing we can say too is that we can only control the information that we have and if there are outside organizations, even in Polk County who are vaccinating outside of that, the groups that the state is telling us, you know, we hope that that's not happening, but if it is, we just work on the groups that we have, following the rules that the state gives us.
I know there's a lot of people for that. I've talked to an osteo that have had it, that got it done in the cities.
Yeah, it could be because they worked on it in the cities and their employer's offering it down there. We're trying to remove some of the county line barriers. If they work in Polk County but they live in the cities, they can have it here. And that's why we wanted to partner with Burnett County too because we realize that there is a big gap up there.
Thanks for what you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good comment. We turn to listen for our fire department.
Mr. Chair?
Just a minute.
They had a workday Saturday. They had a sign-up sheet, put the names on the sign-up sheet, put them in the website. On Sunday, on Monday, we're all notified and I get my shot tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. Where are you going? It's working. Everybody was notified.
Yep, so we are contacting the employers that we know in those high 1A categories, firefighters, law enforcement, and processing those and assigning them out based on where the vaccine is available. So it could be one of the three medical centers next, after next week. It could be Polk County. We just go based on where the vaccine is landing in the county and we point you to where you need to go.
Supervisor Middleton?
I just wanted to say how excited I am about what Tanya just told us. I think this is an amazing endeavor and there's so many moving parts that we don't see that I think we should have our hats off to all their staff that are totally hustling. I mean, it's pretty amazing what we're seeing in our public health department and then also nationwide about rolling out these amazing vaccine protocols and drive-throughs. So thanks, thanks a lot on that, Tanya. And my last question is, I'm still tracking the positivity rate. Where are we at this week? Because, you know, we still have a raging pandemic and we still need to kind of be tracking the disease level in our area.
Tanya's blowing that up. We'll have capacity to vaccinate up to 3,500 people a week once we get up and running, which is pretty significant when you look at some of the numbers that you have. Usually by a clinic, maybe max would be 400. So we're taking that and multiplying it all. So this, this is always updated by, I think it's daily updated by our health department and GIS person. So yeah, I mean, we still have cases coming in, positive cases coming in the door. And we do the full disease investigation on those cases and put those people to isolate. Try not to spread it. You know, one other thing we could talk about too is there's a new variant out. So it's supposed to be a lot more highly contagious. Want to watch out for that too and, you know, I don't know where it's going to end up with people being vaccinated versus the spread of this new variant. Hopefully we can stay ahead of that in Polk County.
Thank you, Tanya. Agenda item 13, we have a report regarding Apple River Solar Projects by Environmental Services. Is that you, Bob?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
It's good to see Supervisor O'Connell online and present, isn't it? It's good to see that.
Good.
Chairman Nelson, how much time do I have? I can keep it brief.
You ran this through committee a few times, right?
Well, it is, that's the intent tonight is this is a project the Environmental Services Committee has been working on for roughly six or seven months. Vice Chairman Olson, as well as the other Environmental Service Committee members, thought it'd be a good idea to present this information primarily because not only have we been looking at it and evaluating this project, but also there'll be an agreement involved. It's called a joint development agreement that will be forthcoming to the Polk County Board. So we thought this would be a good opportunity to update you all, avoid any surprises.
Do the brief version and then if questions come up, it'll give us an opportunity. You can broaden it if there need be. How's that?
Well, the project name is Apple River Solar. Here is a map of the footprint of the project. The project manager is Geronimo Energy. And for those of us who were on the sustainability committee a long time ago, Supervisor Luke in particular, you might remember that particular consultant firm. They were here for a wind project. Anyway, they are the project management manager for this project. Their parent company is called National Grid Renewables, which owns Apple River L C C. Apple River L C C is the name of the project. They, their business model is to create a separate limited liability corporation for every one of their projects. Concurrently, Geronimo is leading three other projects in the Midwest, one in Rock County, one in Cole County, Illinois, and there's also one in Michigan. And they are also in the startup or implementation, early in implementations. Overall, this is a $116 million project. It's anticipated they'll have three full-time employees. At startup, they're going to create roughly 150 temporary construction jobs. And again, this is a thousand acre footprint. Just to coordinate yourselves, here's Highway 8. This is range. This is 70th Street. This is the XL substation about a mile and a half south of Highway 8. This is where the solar panels will convert AC, excuse me, DC to AC, which is fed on the grid and through that substation. There's four towns impacted. We have town of Beamer, the town of Clayton, town of Lincoln, and Apple River. Overall, this solar or photovoltaic solar farm is going to produce 100 megawatts of power. What does that mean? That's equivalent to powering or at least providing the energy needs, electrical energy needs for roughly 15,000 to 20,000 homes. Basically, every home in our county, we actually exceed that. There is handouts on your table. They talk about the promotion material that we provided on your table there. They claim that they'll offset carbon dioxide emissions, roughly 145,000 metric tons annually. What does that mean? That's equivalent to taking 31,000 cars off the road annually. The targeted construction timeline is the winter of 2022. Roughly a year from now, they're looking at startup to be completed in 2023. Because this is a utility similar to cell towers, they are currently seeking state or P S C, Public Service Commission, approved permit. So that is your oversight entity. They have done a great job with outreach. They've met with all of these four impacted towns. Unfortunately, we have fellow clerk of Clayton here, Clayton Tracy can confirm that they've done some outreach, they've met with the towns, tried to be transparent, talked about the project scope. Obviously, they're negotiating lease or purchasing agreements for those folks, producers of agriculture to fall within the footprint. And just some other fun facts, they have been doing all the right public process in terms of noticing all the pieces of the signing process. Again, they've been contacting the towns, they've been contacting the committees, particularly Environmental Services. There's going to be an inverter on site. It's a closed style inverter. Again, that converts the solar energy or DC to AC electricity, or again, pumped through the grid and through the XL Apple River, the substation. There're going to be polycrystalline panels. What does that mean? Well, there's three types of panels of photovoltaic solar power. These are the types that are really thin, they're non-reflective, there's no glare, obviously there's no odor. They have a racking installation of each panel will be facing to the south, will be facing south. And throughout the day, they have a tracking rack in which those panels will move and follow the sun, just to be able to capitalize on that passive solar. Vegetation's going to be planted in between each rows of racks and I guess they're going to try to apply these plants and perennials, some type of grazing material which will be maintained in mode. Overall, the life cycle of these photovoltaic solar panels are roughly 25 to 30 years. There is going to be some low profile fencing that's really up to the P S C. It looks like it's going to be a port fence around the footprint, which is a lot of fence. And the lighting, which is always a concern when you get a large development like this, it's really going to be nominal or minimal. They'll have some lights at the gate, which will be censored, motion sensor. So that is in a nutshell, the project scope. In terms of their process, they submit an application to the P S C on October 23rd of this past fall. They presented to the Environmental Services Committee in October as well. Once you submit an application, once a developer submits an application, it takes about a whole year to get through the whole P S C permitting process. Again, this is a state approved project. Staff, including Tim Anderson, Jason Cheezing, and I are registered with the P S C. And in fact, anyone, any individual, any town government can register with the P S C and subscribe to them, to their docket. Anytime there's any new material, new application, any local concerns that are sent to the P S C, you're alerted and you can read about any new flows or activities. And you are all certainly welcome to look at that if you're interested. County's role, what's our role? Well, because this is such a large scale facility, it has to follow P S C process and obtain, again, that state permit. However, some of our local ordinances do apply because they do take precedent over state ordinances. What are those? Well, the local setbacks, this project will adhere to local town level setbacks. In terms of county ordinances, our stormwater erosion control warnings will apply. We will require a land use permit and those fees will be charged. And also staff, particularly zoning staff, will review the application for completion. Again, the process is, the application is received, the P S C has kept us informed, particularly the Environmental Services Committee. More has been provided to the towns. In terms of our role as the Environmental Services Committee, we've kind of taken a lead. What we've done is we've reached out to the towns, invited them to provide us with concerns. Also, at a meeting last month, Environmental Services Committee had a group process where we collected concerns from not only the committee, but other stakeholders. We collected those and we've sent them onto both the developer and the P S C. Another key thing that the county will do is prior to the deadline, we have an opportunity to be what is called an intervenor. What's an intervenor? An intervenor can be anyone. Well, we signed up to be an intervenor. In fact, we signed up our corporate counsel to be our voice at the table. What I mean by that is part of the P S C process is a public hearing. And so what we're going to do is continue to gather input and concerns from our towns, the counties serving as the leader, equip, equip our corporate counsel with those concerns and bring them to Madison when the public hearing is later this spring. So going forward, P S C is currently working on that joint development agreement that again is something you'll see in the coming months. What's, what's the value of the joint development agreement? Well, what it does, it memorializes this project in writing. There is some shared utility payments involved and there's also concerns about decommissioning in the event of a storm or straight line winds. We want to make sure those things are memorialized in a written document and it will require the signature from the county board. And it's optional for the towns as well. So that is my spiel. I do know and I will say that the developer, again, Geronimo, will be at the Environmental Services Committee on February 3rd. Like I mentioned, we've been gathering concerns from both the towns and the committee and they are going to address those concerns with us and hopefully start a little bit more dialogue and negotiating and finalizing that joint development agreement.
Any questions for Bob?
Mr. Chair, I have one.
Your communications with them, has there been any discussion about expansion?
Fran, you were next.
Just so I understand this correctly, the lightly green shaded area, the project area, Geronimo is going to be buying that property from the property owners or that's just an area that it's going to service? How does that work?
No, this is, this is the footprint of the project. So it's a thousand acres, so the solar panels will be installed within this footprint. In most cases, they're working on a lease agreement, a long-term lease agreement with those private landowners and there's a couple's large producers in this footprint. So that lease, we've asked to, we've asked to see what the lease agreement looks like. Obviously, that's a confidential thing and I don't think we'll see that, but yeah, I think there is an option to purchase, but I'm guessing the rest of it's going to be a long term.
John, you got a question?
Yeah, my question was how much of that, do they have a footprint of how much they would like to own or like to lease, vice versa? And is there any homes now affected in that area?
There isn't a lot of residential. It's mostly all agriculture. This is the submitted project plan. I have other, other evidence of this, but this is the footprint of the project. So I can see.
There is some unknowns there as of now.
Unknowns?
Yeah. As far as ownership or lease, the amount of acreage, because it's going to change the value somewhat.
Perhaps. I don't really have that information.
That was my question.
Yeah, it's the negotiation between the developers and private landowners.
Supervisor Middleton?
Hey, Bob, what is, where's this power going? Is it staying in the county or is it just hooking on to the larger grid?
Yes, you could argue it could be on the national grid or the global grid. Whenever you have any type of energy producing mechanism, whether it's a dam, coal plant, once it's converted to AC, it gets put on the grid and it's sold on the market. So it's not directed towards the community or the county. It'll be pumped onto the grid and sold on the market.
Supervisor Donaldson?
I have a final question. Do we know if the property that's being leased as part of this project, is there anything in place that would make that property tax exempt or tax reduced after it's being used for this type of usage?
After the 25 years or?
Well, is it, you were saying it's going to be part of a long-term lease? How is it going to be assessed then? Is it, is it still going to be taxable property or is it, does it go off from the tax rule?
It will be taxed exempt, but at Valorem, similar to payment in lieu, the shared utility payments. If you are a utility, do similar to a payment, there is some tax revenue distribution projections. I don't know if I can, you're comfortable, I can share that with you, but basically in a nutshell.
I guess if we're going to get into that detail, I'd rather you do it at committee and if, you know, but at least Fran, I think got her question answered, there could be some tax implications and any other? Oh, sure.
So it's assessed agriculture and we know how agriculture is. The shared utility payments exceed or exceed the tax revenue that you would receive if you remain agriculture. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Any other questions on Bob's presentation? Anything from the other supervisors in the other room? Okay, thank you, Bob. You're on 14. That is a committee of all. I would need a motion to go into committee of the hall. And I think the committee of the hall at this point, it's, it's going to be a corporation council is going to give us our week or monthly education. Is that what we call it? Sure. Do we have a motion to go into committee of the hall? Joe, do we have a second? Boy, Malia didn't even hear from you.
That's fine. I'm okay.
We have a second by Sharon Kelly. All in favor, if I say an aye. Aye. That would be a good way to try it though.
Yeah, you could.
Go get a second.
So I think what we're going to talk about today is closed session, because we've had a lot of them come up lately, a lot of closed sessions happen at the committee level for various reasons. Chapter 19 of Wisconsin statutes delineates all of the various reasons why a governmental body can go in a closed session. And what we like to do as staff, when we're looking at an agenda, is to anticipate potential closed sessions and notice those. So for example, we've got a closed session on, on today's county board agenda. It doesn't necessarily mean because you have a closed session listed, that you need to go, go into closed session, but certain topics are reserved for closed session. So we put it on there in anticipation that things may come up in discussion that would require that closed session. Now, there are times when an agenda could be produced by a committee or the full board and we just did not anticipate that we would end up needing a closed session, but the conversation gets to a point where I think or the administrator thinks we're touching on one of those topics that might need to go into closed session. And nothing prohibits the county board or committee from entering into one of those closed sessions, even if a closed session is not specifically articulated on the agenda. As long as that closed session is tied specifically to a topic that was already on the agenda, we can go into closed session. For example, let's say a debate ensues about how we're going to fill a particular position or restructure a department and we're going to talk about personal histories of an employee or a previous staff member. If something like that, when we thought we were talking- If something like that, when we thought we were talking about organizational structure, but we get into the weeds on something where we're talking about personal histories that might be embarrassing, we're going to stop everything and say, hey, we're going to go into closed session. Closed sessions don't, they don't necessarily mean that everything in the closed session will be confidential forever. So let's say you have a closed session because you are looking at resumes of a prospective hire for a new administrator, and you want to debate the merits of what's on the resumes. That closed session remains confidential until the county has made a decision, made an offer, that offer was accepted. And then the information that was gleaned in that closed session could be disclosed because the purpose for the closed session no longer exists. And what I want to caution supervisors from doing is thinking that, well, this is now something we can talk about because the closed session is over, and maybe some decision is anticipated or has been made. When we have a closed session for purposes of receiving legal advice on litigation that we are potentially involved in, remember, the client is the county. It's not an individual supervisor. So if we're talking about litigation strategy, and an individual supervisor tells their friend over lunch the next day about what was talked about in closed session, and it gets to the other side, that individual supervisor could be in trouble. Not only could they have just violated their ethical obligation to keep county business secret until it's open, when it comes in closed session and is attorney-client privileged, but the full county could take an action against that individual supervisor, and there's no protection from an individual supervisor going, going rogue in those circumstances. So attorney-client privilege is very, very important. If you have a question about something that was talked about in closed session, and you want to know if you can disclose it or have a conversation, call me, email me, send me something, and I will let you know. But always err on the side of caution. So that's attorney-client privileged information when we're talking about litigation. The other really important closed session information that needs to stay secret is when we're talking about bargaining strategy. Whether we're talking about entering into a big contract, I don't know, to redo a building, or buying land, or selling something. When we're talking about negotiating things that maybe will give the county a higher leg up in bargaining, if that information were kept secret and you disclose it, an individual supervisor could be liable for interference with contracts. In other words, personally, as a supervisor themselves, as an individual, there is no protection if you go ahead and violate closed session secrets before it's right to, to share them. Now, again, once the litigation is settled, or once the contract was entered into, all of the information from closed session is now public record. So the minutes from the closed session can be disclosed, but not until the purpose for the closed session is, is no longer in existence. There are a few other reasons that we can go into closed session as a governmental body, but they don't really apply specifically to, to counties. There's an ethics commission. There's when a governmental body is acting as a quasi-judicial entity. That really doesn't happen here at the county level. So the ones that I've talked, talked about, those are the main ones to keep in mind. So again, when in doubt, if there's something in closed session that is talked about, it's very important that individual supervisors maintain their ethical obligation and keep that information quiet unless and until the purpose for the closed session is no longer needed, because whatever, the hiring of the person, the contract execution, all of that has already been done. And again, when in doubt, send me an email, give me a call. I will always walk any individual supervisor through what they can and cannot talk about and disclose. And then if you have ideas for future things that you would like me to talk about, please shoot me an email, because what I, what I've been doing right now is just, as things come up, we're, we're adding this topic. But if individual supervisors have questions about, you know, specific procedures for doing certain things, send me an email. I'd be more than happy to put something together. Any questions on the closed session information?
Thank you, Malia, and I do encourage us to, since we didn't do our orientation, I think this is very helpful. We don't spend a whole day on this and that. I just would like to keep it, if the board would be okay with this committee of the whole, that every month we get a five-minute kind of government, and I think it's very helpful, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like that's all we had on our committee of the whole, is that correct? Do we have a motion to come out of committee of the whole? Warren Dahl, second by Bonna Price, all in favor? Aye. Oh, same sign, carried. Let's see. Now, here's where we have, on the agenda, 16 and 17 are really lumped together. Discussion of possible action on the RFP regarding lime quarry. I would, I guess my perspective here, or my comment would be is, we don't go into closed session unless we feel like we need to. I think we handle this the same way, and as a general government, this would be, is this, who's bringing this, Moe or Vince? Vince, okay. Why don't we talk about everything we can and decide if we need to go into closed session? Do I need to, do I need a motion? Or this is a discussion. Legal counsel, what was the, how are we handling this?
So the next three topics really are, are one topic joined together, so calling all three. I think the presentation first from the administrator, then entertain a motion after he's done.
Whether we go into closed session?
If we need to go into closed session for further explanation, I think we'll, we'll know that as we go forward.
Okay, I see. Hey, Vince?
Hey, thank you, everybody. It's good to be here. I wanted to discuss with you what was discussed at general government, in particular as it relates to the potential sale of our lime quarry. If you recall, back in June of 2020, general government and the Board of Supervisors voted to issue an RFP to consider the sale of, of the lime quarry, to people to bid on it. We had three bids, one of which was significantly better than the others. And as a reminder, why did we want to propose possibly selling it? Lime quarry's been operating at a loss. It's been costing taxpayers money. Secondly, agricultural lime sells at a loss. We sell it, you know, we say we sell it for no more than cost. We sell it for a good $3 or $4 under cost. So we lose money when we sell ag lime. Future necessary expenses, we've, it's been put off, it's been put off. If we stay in the ag lime business, we're going to have to spend some money. And this isn't all of it, but this is just the immediate. For example, equipment purchases would include about $350,000. That's not including the crusher which we have, which is very old and, and has issues. Building upgrades there of about $80,000. And then custom crushing, as you recall, a couple of years ago, the board voted, because our, our crusher is not sufficient, we hire someone to crush for us. In 2021, we're budgeted to spend $580,000 to crush lime. Finally, customers' needs, the people in the county and in the surrounding area, preferences are not being adequately met. We are not a private business. We're a county government, and, you know, there are things in terms of days of availability, hours, and flexibility, that we're not as good at, probably as, as a private industry or private company can do. Showing the numbers, you may have recognized this slide from before, where you see from here down, it's coming down, and then we pop up in 2020. The bottom line is, is that sales have been declining until 2020, and we saw a significant bump in ag lime sales. And remember, though, for every ton of ag lime we sell, we lose money. Part of the reason for that, or the main reason for that, is, well, we've had an extremely warm fall in winter, and so, and in addition to that, you combine it with the fact that farmers had some excess funding, maybe coming in through COVID-related funds and relief. So they're buying their ag lime now, or at the end of the year, which might suggest we won't have much ag lime to sell in the next year or two. But that would just be a, a guess on my part. So declining sales, even though they rebounded in 2020, combine that with the bottom half of that slide, says that we are losing money at the lime quarry. So if you look at the lime quarry from 2016 to 2020, we went losing $170,000, then $40,000, then $118,000, $147,000, and then 2020, $111,000 loss. That has to be made up with taxpayer funds or from our general fund. Benefits of selling the lime quarry. If you recall, the number one thing we said, if we're ever going to sell this lime quarry, we want to make sure we don't disadvantage the farmer. I just want to thank probably the most vocal supervisor on this whole issue, Mr. Bonna Price. Because of his persistence and his dedication to that, I have to tell you, our staff has gone back over and over again to find what's the best way we can guarantee ag lime available to our farmers. While we had some options that we thought were very good, we actually went back and kept looking. And one of the best options now that we think is outstanding is that ag lime will be available for farmers. It will be guaranteed by CUP that has been added on to this purchase agreement. And there has to be ag lime available, or their permit gets pulled, and they don't get to operate. Pricing would be more competitive. It's in the business plan of our, our buyer. They're going to be more professional at this. They're going to have crushing and more product available. We believe the price will come down lower than what ours is, which is normally higher than what we have. Better, more flexible customer service. They're going to be able to respond. Accounting wins, with an influx of cash with the sale of the property. Property taxes will, and that, by the way, that sale price is approximately $1.3 million, which will come right to the county. In addition to that, instead of this being county property, it's now private property and will be paying property taxes. That will amount to approximately $20,000 a year, we think. The cost of reclamation will be transferred to the purchaser. If you've seen the pictures of it, we've got 30-foot walls of stone. That will have to be reclaimed at some point. By selling this, that actually gets transferred to the purchaser. We do not have responsibility for that any longer then. Finally, the taxpayer wins. No longer will be, they be subsidizing the operational losses, and the county resources, and that $1.3 million and the funds that are there now, will be reapplied to other board priorities. Best bid information was Jeff Anchuck, an Anchuck organization of about $1.3 million for land, equipment, and inventory. He submitted a business plan. The fundamentals included increasing the hours of operation to meet the needs of the customer. Delivery services available. So instead of having to go there and always get it, they will deliver. Two full-time employees is to start. They anticipate two to four part-time employees to be added. Increase production levels, decrease price, and he continues to commit in the business plan, and by signing the CU, or the, the purchase agreement with the CUP, he's committed to ag lime availability for our farmers. Anchuck organization's been in the trucking and aggregate and crushing, their total experience of 20 years.
Okay, next slide. What's the outcome?
The bottom line for everybody here to know, and why we are recommending this. $1.3 million gain from the sale. $580,000 saving in the crushing expense. $20,000 annual property tax. Significant other savings that we're not spending on the equipment, on the buildings. Resources applied to other priorities. The CUP ensures ag lime for our farmers, for the life of the quarry, and then the county will be relieved of any reclamation expenses. Gets back to what we wanted. This is one of those rare occasions where you get a win-win-win. seldom do you get one like this, but this truly is that opportunity. Again, through some input of supervisors like Mr. Bonna Price, we said, what about leasing? And so I did have staff say, you, you go look at this and you tell me why we want to lease. Give me the good information. We look at it, all those things I just said about the benefits of the sale, but when we look at lease, it, it just doesn't add up. There's no gain from the sale. The lease amount, like our price for ag lime, will be limited to cost. Royalties will be limited on how much we can charge on that. If that were an idea, put on royalties on the sale of, of ag product. No property tax at the county. We still are responsible, like a landlord, responsible for liability, keeping up with the facilities and so on. A leasing, you think about it, what would be their motivation? To get in, make their profit, and get out. They can end that lease when that lease expires, and then we're left with a quarry that may or may not have ag lime available, and we don't have our equipment or our people to work it anymore. Then you're at the mercy of, can we find another leasing? We would have still responsibility for reclaiming the land, for what we've already dug up. There's a bunch there now, so we would have to spend, and I can tell you later how much that would cost. Long-term ag availability is threatened. You know, you can see that. So those are the differences there. So we really think that the sale of this quarry is, is the way to go. Is that all I have? Okay. So I can take questions, if you have any?
Supervisor Duncanson?
What about the employees who work there now? What happens to them?
The plan is to, the two employees, Wood, and they are excited about this, move into what we will call our new Parks and Trails Department, working under Mo and the Public Safety and Public Works Division. It's a good fit there, because we've always had people who can plan for Parks and Trails and have ideas in Bob's division and the Environmental Services, but they didn't have the equipment, the manpower sometimes to do it. Now, with the Public Works or Public Safety, Public Works, Mo and his team, that's what they do. They got the equipment, they got the manpower, the know-how, let's go in and get it done. And so we look at those two people being good assets there to help us in one of our county priorities.
Any questions from the other room supervisors?
Mike Pritchard here.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
What is the current state of the documentation for a sales transaction?
Documentation for what? Malia, would you answer that?
The sale of the lime quarry.
Supervisor Pritchard, I did send to you at your request another copy to your personal email of the offer to purchase.
I didn't have it at 5:00 this afternoon.
I, I, I sent it late afternoon. Mr. Netherland sent it to you last week, but that would have been to your county email. So we have that circulated. We also have the deed restriction, also known as the restrictive covenant, was also circulated. So all of that has been circulated.
My question is prompted because of the General Government Committee. I had asked to be able to review the contract, and I, I, I don't know what I need to do to correct it, so people use my personal email, and occasionally something does go to the county email. And in any event, is the documentation ready to sign?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, and I, the handout here was, is the resolution on the agenda?
The topic was, the topic was on the agenda of taking action. The resolution was drafted and has been circulated. It, again, was sent to you last week, and I'm just looking at my email to you today, Supervisor Pritchard. I sent it at 4:55 PM.
Okay, I didn't...
It's upon your voicemail that you left me this afternoon.
I didn't get it. The... I didn't get it.
Mike, can I say something?
Mike? Yeah.
Just want to finish. You got to be careful when you say you didn't get it. We just said you got it, you didn't look at it. I think you need to be clear that you got it, you just didn't see it, right?
I was gone by then.
Okay, but you got it.
Maybe I did or maybe you didn't. I haven't opened my computer to see, so.
Corporation Council said you got it.
That wasn't much time to review it before a 6:00 meeting.
We would highly recommend that you don't use your personal email for county business. It was emailed to your county email address last week.
Let's not get off on that tangent right now.
Supervisor Pritchard, your question's been asked. I'm not going to let you ask any more questions right now.
Well, I have a key question I want to ask and I did.
Mike? Mike, you asked a question and the Corporation Council answered it that the document is ready. I'm going to ask other supervisors. Now it's one question at a time. I'll come back to you.
All right.
But you can't dominate the meeting with your questions. Are there any other questions regarding the lime quarry presentation right now? We're in the committee of the whole. Are we in the committee? Oh, we're in discussion. Sorry. Are there any other supervisors?
Mr. Chair, I have one.
Okay. Supervisor Middleton, go ahead.
So I'm reading under number five, the conditional use permit piece, and I'm curious about sort of the mechanism for how we guarantee that it's available? How does, like, market value is not being, how does that get triggered? What's the enforcement piece? You know, those kind of details I'm interested in. It'd be nice if that was in here.
Sure. Malia, would you?
It was, just like other conditional use permit, alleged violations of the conditional use would likely start from a citizen complaint. So if there were a farmer customer who was not able to get the ag lime they needed, they would complain to the county. The county would then have the option of revoking the conditional use permit or seeking redress in the courts to force them to comply with the terms of the deed restriction. But the revocation of the conditional use permit would be the, I guess, fastest, strongest, most swift potential resolution to the issue of not providing the ag lime.
And Supervisor Middleton, I know that question was discussed early at General Government, and that would go through the department and who's in charge of all quarries or gravel pits. Who was that individual that we thought those questions would go first? Bob, that was someone in your department, Eric?
Oh, Dean Christensen, yes.
Is it Dean?
Dean.
Dean. So we actually have an individual that works in Bob's department that is in charge of all the.
Non-metallic mining.
Non-metallic mines currently in the county. And the reclamation piece of it too, he's in charge of all of that. Joe, you have a question.
Well, what happens if who we sell it to goes into bankruptcy?
Malia, would you answer that?
Well, sure, there would be the process for any type of bankruptcy. A receiver could potentially be appointed to operate the quarry, I suppose. But the concern about whether or not the restrictive covenant and CUP obligation would remain, it would run with the land. In other words, so even if this operator went into bankruptcy and it was purchased by some new operator, or they sold it down the road because they wanted to get out of the business, that requirement, the deed restriction and the CUP would run with the land. So it would carry through, and the language that we included would be that this requirement, this deed restriction and CUP obligation would be, would remain in effect until the pit was ripe for reclamation. We define ripe for reclamation to be exhausting the lime material to at least the current depth and to the property line.
Yeah, Supervisor Demeling, we talked about that too in our committee, that we wanted that to define that. Someone couldn't come in and say, we're going to do reclamation today, I'm out. That this pit has to stay open until it got to property lines and maintain the current depth. So that got put in the contract, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from this room? Supervisor Bonner Price?
Mr. Chairman, Administrator, about a third of our board here is new and wasn't here when this started to develop here about three, four years. So it's extremely important that we find out how we got to where we are. To my knowledge, four, about four years ago, Mr., you know, our Administrator Dana Frye came up with this four-person central government that eliminated about five committees from the county board, used of nine committees. There was an agriculture committee since government started in Polk County. So that eliminated the ag committee, which was in charge of the lime quarry. Somehow, you know, most of the things that he proposed were experimental, and he left and you were charged with carrying things on. It was our responsibility to come up with what's right and what's wrong and what's working and what isn't. So we had a person and have a person here, the only one that I know of in our government, Mr. Bob, had been working with extension for a long time. I recently, this weekend, talked to the former quarry employee that ran the lime quarry. It was started in 1940 and run successfully by government employees for 80 years. It's put millions of dollars in the Polk County General Fund and helped balance the budget many, many years. It was turned over to the highway department. To me, it should have been turned over to Bob Kazmercy, someone that had experience with agriculture. Mr. Mo, I think he's one of our better highway commissioners in the state, but he is so overloaded that he didn't have no choice to work things that are detrimental to the lime quarry. For open four days a week, crushing and instead of doing things that were forthright, getting a new crusher, moving the operation to the south side of the road. When this all happened four years ago, I read the, I read the plan, the operations plan that Mr. Peterson had proposed from there on with the new person in control. I read the resume of, right, of Mr. Peterson, Brad Vibrock, Jody, the gal that was working there, and they presented them to Mo and they presented the plan to Mo and their business plan to Mo. And Mr. Peterson said that Bob Kazmercy, he didn't write the plan, but he said he was so helpful in telling them how to write a plan. And the operation was going to move to the south side of the road. That would have eliminated one crusher and it would have kept this going for as long as the pit was there, which we should reserve today. And from that, from that time on, everything went south. Chris, you and I was talking to a farmer Saturday morning. I was there at his farm in the barn, and you happened to call him. And I handed you the phone to one of the bigger farmers in the county, and he asked us, how did we get here? He said, every month, every business needs a spreadsheet. What does it say on that spreadsheet? If something is negative, if it's not working out, if it's not working with the, with the operations plan, who's tracking that? Who's responsible? What do you do? You find a way to make it work or you hire somebody that can make it work? And that's just the way business operates. I take an oath of as well, taking an oath of serve the constituents to make sure that the statute of the state of Wisconsin is delivered in our county. The statute says you service the people of your county from birth till death. This Polk County lime that the farmers can't work without is a service that really applies from the statute. That's why we have it there. That's why the county owns it. It costs money to grind lime fine to a dust. It costs more than what you can charge for. Lime being brought into the county at $4, that's what we're selling it for now. The riprap and the class five and that, those are the necessary, the necessary byproducts that we can't deliver, but we can always sell. And I know you have some things contrary to that, but I also talked to Dan Barr and Mark O'Connell from the County Association, and they have different opinions of what some things are presented.
So one of the things I, I guess I just want to say is, you know, we're supposed to be in this asking questions, and I know we're in almost a little debate that we should be doing, you know, once there's a motion, but I'm giving you because you've been here an awful long time, you know everything about this, you're passionate about it, and I'm fine with you. That was a long question.
Well, questions and comments is what we need.
Yeah, and I agree, but comments and maybe debate over whether we should be doing this or not should be done once there's a motion and there's a second, but.
If something isn't right, I apologize.
No, I'm, go ahead. I want you to finish because it's important to you.
It's important to the farmers in the future of Polk County.
I know it is. Yep. All right, you good? All right. Anyone else in this room got a question for Vince? Supervisor Pritchard, you wanted to, you had another couple of questions, it sounded like.
I did. And the points that I was concerned about or wanted to know the information was this ATSEC Organization LLC. Do we know what their net worth is? That's one question. Two, is there a proviso somewhere that they would pay attorney's fees if the county had to enforce some of these provisions? And three, we had some discussion in the Government Committee, Committee on Surety Bond, and how much of a surety bond are they putting up? And does it cover both the reclamation and per visit contract generally? And then there was a provision in the covenant on market price at or below the market as defined in year in, but I didn't see a further definition other than the market price, I guess.
All right, so you had four questions there. Who wants to start off with the bonding and how, I mean, we talked about this in General Government, but can someone explain again how we do our?
I'll do just one quick part. What's the amount of the bond on this contract?
Well, it depends on, it depends on how big your pit is. So it's all size, there's, the county has that policy. I don't know how many non-metallic mines we have, but that's already, we told, we answered that question in General Government for you, Mike, if you recall.
No, you didn't, to my satisfaction.
Okay, well, we'll try it again here for you. Who wants to answer the question on non-metallic mining?
The surety bond for reclamation is determined, you know, we have our local department that works with the state and it's based on the conditions of the mine. And they, that is worked out, and it's with acreage, it deals with depth, and there's a formula that is applied by our department in Environmental Services. And it usually pertains to how much they're going to do. So once they reach that amount, that place, the owner is required to reclaim it. And so that's what that surety bond is there. So even if they walked on us, that surety bond or that guarantee will be used for the reclamation of that plan that has been mined.
What was, what was the other questions?
Well, how much is the dollar amount? And we're about to sign a contract. What's the dollar amount on this surety bond for this project?
There is no dollar amount on the non-metallic mine reclamation surety. That is something we do not have discretion on. It is a formula that is, will be applied when they go to obtain their reclamation permit. They will be taking over the county's reclamation permit, but they will be required to provide a sufficient surety. But that's something that happens through Environmental Services. There is no surety that is a part of the provision requiring ag lime.
All of that can't provide the security bond.
Mike, you got to wait till someone finishes before you start talking. Let Supervisor, Malia, will you let her finish, please, Mike?
There is no surety outside of the reclamation permit surety that is involved with the transaction. The remedies are outlined in the deed restriction that was sent out specifically revocation of the conditional use permit. In other words, revoking their ability to operate and/or filing direct action to have them comply with the terms of the deed restriction. In other words, a court order forcing them to provide the ag lime. Those are our options. There is no surety that would, where they could just simply buy their way out of the obligation to have the ag lime available.
Well, if they go bankrupt.
I answered that question when Supervisor Demeling asked any future owner, whether they purchase it through bankruptcy, whether there is a receivership put in place and someone else is operating it, any future owner of that pit will be obligated under the same terms and conditions as this owner.
Are there any other questions from any other supervisors?
Well, I had other questions that weren't answered.
What are they, Mike?
One is how the price determined, and the other is, is there a clause?
Okay, so Mike, Mike, can you just answer, ask one question at a time?
Well, yes, I.
It'd be a lot easier for you to ask the question and then let us answer it, and then you can ask your next one.
Okay. The first one, there's.
You asked a question for how do you determine the amount?
Clause, is there a clause that the buyer would pay attorney's fees if the county has to go to court against the buyer?
No.
The answer was no. What was your other question?
And then the other question is how the, how the price of, how market price is determined? If there's a clause, it spills that out.
We had originally proposed defining market price as a specific distance, like some type of circle. I think we were looking at a certain number of miles away from the pit. Our concern was that if you defined it as the average or the median or the mean of prices of pits within some specific distance, then you could have theoretically an operator go, okay, well, if I take this one, this is really high, and this one way over here, they don't have it, and then have some market rate that they define that's outside of the scope. In other words, out pricing and saying, yeah, I have ag lime available, but it, no farmer's going to want to buy it because I've set the price using that market. We decided to deliberately leave the term ambiguous so that we can try to enforce if we believe that what they're doing is outside of what market would be determined. So we did contemplate whether or not to define market and chose that it would be in the county, the county's best interest to leave it ambiguous.
Thank you. I'm trying to make Mr. Bonner Price feel comfortable, and I'm not sure that he would or I would with what we learned in this little bit. or I would with what we've learned in this little bit here. So, that, the ag held lime is going to be, continue to be provided to area farmers, I guess. That's the concern.
All right, so, I think Vince, we're good. You presented everything. I think at this point then, what we're looking for is there is a recommendation from general government, send it here, and I believe we would need a motion. We need a motion to, what administrator has said, and Lea, we have a motion to entertain selling the lime quarry.
A good question before I make that resolution, or that motion. Having sat through the closed session in general government last week, and I'll leave this up to staff, is it important that the county board knows what was said in that closed session?
I think it's a valuable piece of information, and if anyone forgets it, I think we should have a closed session and let me...
I agree. Having sat through it, I think the county board should know what that is.
So, you make a motion?
I would make a motion and go into closed session.
We have a second. Second by Supervisor Warren Dahl. Any discussion about that? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Close.
All attendees, I'm gonna have to eject you from the web.
This will take about probably 15 minutes is all at max.
I need you to run these down.
We're in closed session now?
All right, give me just a second.
So, before there's any more discussion about this, we're gonna need a motion in a second.
They need to vote to go into open session. They only have a person second.
Oh, we didn't vote? Okay, sure.
We need to get another call.
We did vote. It was all in favor. It was unanimous. Yeah, I got the thumbs up by Kim O'Connell. So, at this point, for there to be any more discussion about this, we're gonna need a motion in a second, and then we can talk about it more.
Is it on the agenda?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it's number 19.
I didn't read it.
That's where the... Yeah, I got lost in that section, too.
Okay, we're in open session, so are we going to get a motion and a second to continue talking about this or selling this? Up to the board. We got a motion. A motion by Olson. We have a second. Second by Arcan. Now, we can ask additional questions. Supervisor Demling.
Okay. I was gonna do this earlier, but on what Lea said about the people of Polk County paying for the lime quarry, to keep it open or whatever. Now, to me, that's no different than me, my kids are out of school, I pay taxes to pay for that school, and I get no benefit out of it. But yet, my taxes are going right directly to the school to pay for other people's kids. That, to me, is no difference than keeping the line open, the pit open. That's my case.
Supervisor Warren Dahl.
There's any discussion part. I went to the two largest farmers in my district and talked to them for quite in length about this. I talked to the one in the middle of the field that he had just bought most of my property, who was spreading lime on it. So, I said, hey, perfect, let's talk about lime. Where are you getting the lime? Spring Valley. How much are you paying a ton? $4. Says I can, I can save $170 semi-load in Spring Valley compared to buying from the county. And he says I'm getting 70, 79 lime from them. Spread's real nice. I got something in the county earlier, it was chunky, I spent a lot of time breaking it up. You know, they're, you know, the farm, the two farmers I talked to thought this is great, we can get the price regulated somewhat so that they can buy it here instead of traveling that far to get it. So, both are in favor of the sale if it helps them be able to buy their lime locally. Otherwise, they haul it in. And the other good thing for the farming community, if this happens, is we get, we get less of this water treatment lime in here. It's got a lot of chemicals, it's got a lot of irons in it. That's what people are using. It's free, you can get it delivered to your farm for free. But you can only use it some of the years, and then you have too many, you have a problem with the chemicals.
I did that when I was farming, just for discussion. And yeah, it's free, and I found out that it got so hard once they delivered it and filed it, that I couldn't, I tried to bust out everything I had, and you'll admit that, Ben, you've heard that, you bust everything you have trying to spread it. It'd be nice if it was like farmland, but it's not.
Well, that's the end of what I got from the two largest farmers in my district.
Bobby Wilson is hauling it in there in the belly dump.
He's the one I talked to.
Supervisor Olson?
Yeah, so, I talked to a couple of the local farmers besides myself, of course. They really don't have a problem with it as, as long as lime is still available. Had a phone call from a fairly large farmer in Southern Polk County, and he was like, yeah, I've talked to the neighbors. We're okay, as, you know, as long as lime is gonna be available. And three years ago, when we priced lime, just like the guy in Lake Town there, we could have bought it somewhere other than Polk County considerably cheaper than we could have got it trucked in from the county quarry. And when you live as far away from the quarry as we do, trucking becomes a bigger issue all the, all the time, and we got a guy bringing lime in for $5, 10 less spread than what we could get it out of the quarry for. So, it really is a price thing, and I believe once it's, once it's privatized, it becomes cheaper, and especially for the local farms.
Supervisor Bonner Price?
This is all true, and this is why the discussion is good, the pros and cons. I want everybody to hear it all. But the unique thing about, about Polk County lime is it's unique to our area. Yeah, what we have here is a 50, 59 lime. I compare it to like, like that atrazine and lasso. The 50, 59, it's a slower dissolving, the acid soil that we've got, I never, and it all goes by your soil test. That's the proof where it is in the pudding. And our 50, 59 lime is usually good in higher clay and this type of soil for probably four or five years. Where your 60, 69 or 70, 79 lime, that's, it's more aggressive, and it does a great job taking that acidity out, like it hardly ever is there in the second year. And so, that's why, yeah, we can get lime from all over, but here's our quarry, and every farmer that I know of would rather get the quality of lime that we got in our quarry. So, don't sell our farmer short.
All right. Are there other questions? Supervisor Olson?
I don't have a question. I would just like to say when we're done with this discussion, I would like to make an amendment to the resolution, just so that when the discussion is done...
Before we vote, you want to move it over?
I would like to make an amendment.
And I'd like to make one.
The, any other questions from the other room?
Nope.
No. Well, does it matter what amendment? You want to go last, Supervisor Olson, or you want to go first?
It's no difference to me if John wants to go first.
Go ahead, John.
I'd like to make an amendment that if this is voted down, that our land and water specialist, he's been our extension man for Polk County for a long time, he knows every, every facet of this, I would like to immediately have Bob Kazmersky appointed the manager of the lime quarry and research a business plan to come back to the, to the executive committee in either 30 or 60 days. We study a plan if it's gonna work. The former people that were there had a plan, was rejected by one person. I want to see a business plan that we can review on the executive committee, and after that, I would be satisfied with whatever happens one way or the other. But we need an alternative here to look at what has worked and what should be working because...
So, how about this? How about, I think if, if this does not pass tonight, clearly, it's gonna be on the agenda at the executive committee. So, I don't think we need an amendment to say, because we could, you can put it on the agenda, you are on the executive committee, you can put that on the agenda and require that discussion. If it's voted down, you can take it back there and do what you want to do. I don't think we need it.
The key to my amendment, though, is having Bob Kazmersky take over the, the...
Okay, I'm gonna ask Corporation Counsel if that's proper in the amendment.
Sure. So, that would not be an amendment to the current resolution to sell the lime quarry. What I think Supervisor Bonner Price is asking is not something that the Polk County Board could do today, could not unilaterally usurp the authority of the county administrator and require transfer of the oversight, but I think with Supervisor, excuse me, Chairman Nelson's agreement, your concept will be placed on the appropriate committee for consideration if this resolution to sell does not pass tonight.
We'll do that, John.
My point, my point is, so we know before we vote that we have an alternative.
We will have that alternative before we vote, that if this does not pass tonight, it'll be on the executive committee's agenda next month, and we'll discuss all of those issues that you raised.
But I, my point is that I want Bob Kazmersky to keep...
You can, you can ask that.
The only one who's influential agriculture.
Bob's shaking his head back there right now, so I'm not gonna agree to that. So, but we, it will be on the agenda if this does not pass. I promise you that. And we will discuss what, we have divisional, we have a divisional department, you have that on the agenda, too. We didn't get to it last month. That will tie this whole thing together. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna deem the motion or the amendment not valid.
Well, I would just withdraw it.
Okay, withdraw it, please.
So, we do have that alternative.
Supervisor Olson?
My amendment to the resolution is, whereas the general government committee is hereby directed to develop a resolution assigning the balance of the lime quarry fund following the accounting of all expenses and incomes after the closing of the sale, a aforementioned resolution shall address fund, shall address funding a plan developed by the Environmental Services Committee for the development, expansion, and improvement of the Polk County Trail System with the initial intent and focus of said plan being placed on the Stour Trail and the development of the rustic path throughout the corridor.
Was there anything about general government in there? Resist environmental services only? Because it's a money thing.
Yeah, general government would direct environmental services to develop a resolution.
We have a second on that? Supervisor Duncanson?
I just have a second question for...
Well, we need a second before we, we got a second by Sharon Kelly. Now, we can have discussions. Go ahead, Supervisor, you can direct the question to me, and we'll...
Okay, sure. The question that I have, if I understand for as amendment correctly, is to allocate the proceeds of this sale, to, to ask general government to allocate the proceeds of this sale towards working with the off system path on the Stour, is that correct?
I believe the, and, and...
Is that intent?
If it's sold, did you say?
Yeah, if it is sold, that the proceeds of the sale will go towards, the general government will direct the proceeds of those sale, that sale to environmental services for the development of a, of the parallel trail.
I will, I will try to answer that question for you, because this, this amendment did go through Corporation Counsel, Chad, Vince, and myself. We discussed it. So, the intent of the amendment is to say that what's in the fund after the sale, which could be more than the sale amount, it summers between a million and a million and a half dollars, before that would be, that dollars would be put back into the general fund, just as this obis of money that it just gets dropped into, and I don't mean to say that the government's just gonna spend it, but that, I'll get to you, Joe. The, that, before that money goes into the general fund, environmental services and general government have this on their agendas, and it would be put in a designated trail fund to finish the Stour Trail Plan, which is finishing the rustic trail for the entire section of the trail. And when that project's exhausted, that the fund would still be there, and it could be used for future trail development by the county. This is a big deal. County's never done this before, but you'd be earmarking that money, and that's all it could be used for. And then, environmental services would make a recommendation, general government would have to approve it, it would come back to the county board, and there would have to be, I believe, a resolution, and Lea, you can fill in the gaps.
Right, so, so what this amendment cannot do is amend the budget today. Of course, that would, that would change everything. So, this is not today designating those proceeds to that project. It's, it's delegating to general government and environmental services to come up with a resolution to do that. And then, when that comes up for a vote, that, if it allocated funds in this budget cycle, would require a two-thirds majority. So, it's just sending it to those committees to create that plan and develop that resolution to designate the funds.
Joe?
I would like Brad to retract what he just said for the simple fact that I think it's a conflict of interest, knowing we have a vote coming up on a Stour Trail, and him saying that, well, if the lime quarry sells, we're gonna delegate all this money to the Stour Trail. It is a conflict of interest.
Is there a conflict of interest?
There is no conflict of interest, and I do understand the concern with that vote coming later. Again, this is delegating the planning to those committees to develop a resolution that would designate the funds. This isn't actually designating the funds today.
Excuse me, I gotta take a break. Can't handle it. I do want a supervisor takes a break.
He's not excused.
Okay. So, what happens if we have to vote on something?
His vote.
Okay.
He'll be back.
So, any other, Supervisor Warren Dahl?
Just a comment about, you know, I think it's our responsibility to look at other areas in the county other than just that trail and where some of this money should go. Where have we got other problems? Are we just gonna delegate the whole thing?
We're not delegating, we're sending it to two committees, and trails are one of our number one issues in Polk County. It was identified as a top priority. Any other comments in the other room?
Yeah, this is, I have a, I've been listening to what Joe said and listening to Brad's amendment, and, you know, the other piece that this money could... And, you know, the other piece that this money could be delegated to is the recycling center. I mean, that's a, a needed infrastructure that we should be improving. So I'm just sort of torn about all this and, and I'm not really comfortable with sort of tying these resolutions to a budget scramble right now, I guess. That's my opinion.
Uh, Supervisor Kelly, you have a question?
But, but we aren't really tied into a, tied into anything at this point. All we're doing is seeing the two committees, it goes to the two committees, right? To develop what kind of plan it would be.
Yeah, it would come, it would have to, the idea is that we would have our committees look at this. And, uh, there's certainly no obligation by our county board to approve of, you know, if Environmental Services says do A, and General Government says do B, we got to, it would have to come back as a resolution to the board. And if that resolution failed at a later date, the money would go, if, you know, if we felt like as a board that this was not a priority for the board to put these funds in it, the resolution can be amended or voted down for and the money can go into general fund and it'll sit there until next budget season. So the board doesn't have to approve funding, if, you know, if the board doesn't want to fund the trail expansion with these funds, um, these funds will just go in the general fund. Uh, John?
Are we really again trying to take money from agriculture and put it in another entity? Just like we took the money from the Lime Quarry for millions of dollars for years and put it in a general fund?
Your general fund, right now, the money, if this property is sold today, the money's going to go into the general fund.
Well, if I ever heard of putting the cart before the horse, why are we talking about putting the money someplace before we even voted?
Because there's questions about, you know, where the money, it's a big money. It's a big sale.
Oh, please call the question. Don't sell them farmers out again.
Okay, we had to, so call the question. Supervisor Olson?
If the second is okay with it, I'm, I'm okay with pulling it out. The whole idea behind this was to earmark the money somewhere where, where it seems as though a, a large group of people think they're being, um, ignored. Um, but if, I mean, if we wanted to just go into the abyss of the general fund and stay there and be spent, I, I guess, I'm okay with that. You know, I, I mean, I don't care where it's spent, but then this money probably never sees a, any of this money probably never sees a trail, um, or anything else, um, other than just, there it is. It's, it's, it's gone. It was just a, an idea to earmark it for something that, um, I thought was a good idea, but.
Supervisor Luke?
It's, it's a good idea. I, however, aren't we circumventing our budget process?
That's why it cannot amend this year's budget and it, it just, uh, an amendment that would send the concept to those two committees to come up with a plan and then send it back. And then that resolution, if it actually did designate the funds, would require two-thirds.
I understand, but what's wrong with going through our, but putting it into the general fund? If we have a project similar to what we're discussing, uh, and we're going to be discussing that obviously on its own merit, uh, well, budgeting and then, uh, if we, we are so inclined, let's put all nine, nine million in there.
The questions we call, we're going to have a roll call vote on this. Um.
Mister Chair?
I would withdraw it if the second is okay with it. Well, we've had called the question already.
Okay.
So I, I, I'd like us to have a vote on this amendment. Um, can you please do a roll call vote?
Yes.
You're voting for Supervisor Olson's amendment to ask for these funds to be discussed in Environmental Services and General Government and decide whether or not we're going to dedicate them in the, the general fund, but it would have a designated line item that these funds would be held there until they were exhausted over years. You're still going to get to decide how you want to spend the money. We're not deciding to spend the money tomorrow. So I think the fact that we're spending money, you know, I personally think it's a great idea. And I think the fact that we would, if this project, if this property sells, we have an opportunity as a county to make a big investment, one of the highest priorities we have. And I, I find it very hard that our board will spend years to try to find a way to put that kind of resources into the trail system. That has been our biggest issue since I've been on the board over the Stourer Trail. Points that we heard over the last week of we're going to do a measly eight tenths of a mile where we could have the funds now and our committees could actually work on this. And, and maybe it does get put in the general fund. But that's my point and we've got a roll call vote and would you please start?
Brad Olson?
Yes.
Doug Rowdy? Doug Rowdy?
Supervisor Rowdy?
Yes? I don't, I don't understand the question yet, so I'm not saying yes to that. I'm a- answering your question that here, I'm your.
The question Doug is, are we going to approve Supervisor Olson's amendment to have Environmental Services and General Government, uh, make a recommendation, a resolution to designate these funds for trail improvements?
I, I guess my opinion would be we started out with a sale and now we've trailed off into what the worry is with the money.
That's a question. Yeah? Exactly right. Hold back for it. So is, is that a yes or no Supervisor Rowdy?
We don't know yet. Yeah. It sounds like this room is.
Uh, Supervisor Middleton, uh, the question, we're in a roll call vote. This is Supervisor Rowdy?
What do you want my answer to? I don't understand, Mister Chairman.
Okay, if you don't want to answer it, I can just take it as a negative, but if you want to vote, you can vote to, if the sale of the Lime Quarry is approved tonight, you can vote to have, before the money is put in the general fund, you can vote on whether or not to have two committees review the option of delegating these funds to the trail expansion in Polk County.
I would say that there, I, I would say yes.
All right. Who's next?
Steve Wardoff?
Yes.
Tracy LeBlanc? Dan Rock?
Yes.
Michael Pritchard?
No.
Sharon Kelly? Kim O'Connell?
Yes.
Amy Middleton?
Yes.
Jay Luke?
No.
Rand Dunkinson?
No.
Russ Arcand?
Yes.
Don Bonaprise?
No.
So Demoli?
No.
All right. Do you want me to repeat my votes to make sure that I have them right? Um, I have Brad Olson voting yes.
Account.
Account, one, two, three, eight, eight yeses. Oh, I'm sorry. And one, two, three, four, six, six no's. We didn't get your vote.
You need it?
Did everybody in their rooms vote? Kim and?
Yeah. Want me to go down the list real quick?
No, we got it. I, and I will vote to support that idea of sending it to two committees. So I'd be a yes.
Nice.
So the amendment passes. We're back to the original motion to sell the Lime Quarry as presented this evening in the RFP. Is there any other discussion? I think we ended discussion, John, you had it. Uh, Brad, you had it. I, uh, do we have a, can I call the question? Okay, the question's been called.
Don't sell the farmers out.
Roll call vote?
Uh, Doug Rowdy?
Where are we at now? Again, I'm losing here in this little room.
Oh, Doug? We're now voting to.
Now you're, you're voting on Resolution 921?
Yes, we're, we're on resol, we're on the RFP to sell the Lime Quarry as presented by Administrator this evening.
Yes.
Wardoff?
Yes.
LeBlanc? Brooke?
Yes.
Pritchard?
I'll say yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yeah.
Middleton?
No.
Boop?
No.
Dunkinson?
No.
Arcand?
No.
Bonaprise?
No.
Demoli?
No.
Olson?
Yes.
Olson?
Am I the last one?
You're the last one.
Letter of the votes?
One, two, three. Eight, two, one, two, three, four, six. Eight yeses.
Yeah, vote in until it's tied, right? Huh? You cannot vote unless it's tied, correct? When it's a roll call, then I can vote. Um, I don't need to vote on this right now. The motion, uh, is, uh, passed, so we are on agenda item. Make a comment? No, not right now. Again, at the end, we can take a break. We'll take a, we'll take a, uh, ten, we'll take a ten minute break. Eight thirty-five. Joe, you can make a comment at the end. I'm going to, you got Supervisor's comment.
Was it to sell the quarry or not?
You're going to sell it?
Yeah. Well, what was it? Was six to eight?
Six to eight?
Eight said yes to sell it.
Okay.
As I, did you understand that too?
Yep.
Yep.
Eight to six?
Eight to six.
Okay.
Four.
Four selling it, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It's a little weird to follow in your eyes.
Kind of is, yeah.
I, I, I see.
The process, it's available to the broader community. And we have gotten a lot of feedback as well as you all. Once we've done these, added this clarifying and more explanatory edits, two weeks ago, on January 5th, we received a letter from the DNR with assurances that these clarifying support, these clarifying edits will satisfy the county's obligations to the MOU and that the master plan is compliant. The resolution itself has three, outlines three county commitments. And that is really the intent and the meat within the resolution is those three county commitments. What are they? We need to construct the off-trail rustic winter use only pedestrian trail from Keller Avenue to Baker Avenue. That's roughly 1.8 mile, one trip, 1.6 miles. We have committed the county towards that project. That is stage one. Further commitments is stage two and stage three. Stage two is Baker Avenue to County C. Stage three is County C to Lotus Lake. The second county commitment is to develop a cross-country trail in D.D. Kennedy Park and Aldrin Park. That exists. We have plans to expand that network and also connect the Balsam Branch cross-country ski trails. I do have a map if you're interested. I also have a schematic or a preliminary plan for the rustic trail as well we can bring up. The commitment there in terms of D.D. Kennedy and Aldrin is to provide alternative opportunities for our silent sport users. And also, we as the county, because there is not a friends group for that new set of cross-country trails, that we will be responsible for the O and M, operational and maintenance of that trail. And what that means is we'll maintain and groom those new ski trails. The third county commitment is defining the season for equestrians. We, in collaboration with the DNR, have dedicated October 1st through or up until deer rifle season. It's roughly seven and a half weeks where equestrians are allowed on the trail. There is the contingency that if equestrians demonstrate measured high usage, in other words, if there is a demand, a greater demand for horses on that trail, and we can quantify it and measure it, that the county board has the liberty to adjust, expand, or move that season. So with Resolution 20, excuse me, O221, which was unanimously recommended by the Environmental Services Committee, if approved by the county board tonight, we believe is a very significant step towards a resolution and meeting the goals and objectives within the master plan. Is that louder, John?
That was good, Bob. Appreciate it.
You haven't talked that loud before.
It got quieter at the end.
We know you haven't never talked that loud before. It's the first time I've heard you.
I think it would be very helpful that we have a microphone at the podium for certain individuals. So I'm sure we have some questions for Bob. Supervisor Duncanson.
The question that I have is the segment, the first segment of the rustic trail. Who owns the property that trail is going to be located on? Is that private landowners? Is it still within the right-of-way? Is it city property? Who owns the property that that's going to be located on?
It's all within railroad right-of-way. And if you're interested, I do have a preliminary map of that trail. It's interesting that right-of-way over time, because people go out and resurvey those adjacent landowners, and so it's been squeezed a little bit. But typically railroad right-of-way is 100 feet wide. And so there are certain areas where it's not as wide as it should, but it is.
Supervisor Luke.
You're talking about county commitments to improving the walkways in a more rustic manner?
Yes, sir.
And how is that funded?
Well, that's the, that's a good question.
I mean, we can make a commitment. We're committing to a future board potentially for spending money. Or we're spending money for if somebody else may not want to.
Well, I do know with this resolution, we made an attempt to do that financial impact. And we do know these three county commitments will cost So that's our estimate, and that's for both the trail development with the rustic trail, the cross-country ski trail in Aldrin and D.D. Kennedy and those connections. Equipment, this additional safety pieces, as well as additional signage.
See, that's $21,000 to Lotus Lake?
No, sir. The three county commitments that we're talking about, the cross-country trail in Aldrin and D.D. Kennedy, connecting them to Balsam Lake, the Balsam Branch, that's one commitment. The other commitment is the rustic trail parallel to this tower right now, from Keller Avenue to Baker Avenue.
That's real.
Right.
That's it financially. That's our impact.
Yeah. That's the total impact. So we have to buy additional signage for safety. We have to do some outreach education as well. And then the equipment and brush clearing costs are included. Just under $30,000 for that initial.
To Baker Street.
Yes, sir. Stage two, again, from Baker Avenue. Yeah, Baker Avenue to County C, stage two, and then stage three, County C to Lotus. Our commitments, those, those have yet to be. The cost estimate for that has yet to be done. There's some geographical challenges with that because of the grade, it's wet, there's dark sites. There's some additional cost. We do have an estimate based upon the brushing. And if you were to punch it all the way through to Lotus, the brushing alone would be 56,950. And just to keep it in a nutshell, $57,000 to punch pedestrian trail only to Lotus. Based upon brushing. We broke it down per mile cost. For eight miles of that 13-mile corridor, it's light brushing. And it's minimal brushing, minimal tree removal. On average, per mile, that's $3,200, $3,200. However, 4.5 miles of that 13-mile corridor is medium, a moderate brushing. There's a smoresign, past trees to take down. And then overall, out of the 13 miles, 1.5 of the 13 is some really heavy work. Includes significant brushing, some grading, some tree removal. That, we're estimating at $6,500 a mile cost. So, stage two and stage three can come later, to answer your question. In order to expedite, for example, if you wanted the trail to be open this winter, we would have to have stage one in place prior to that. We would have to go out and groom the new cross-country ski trails in Aldrin and D.D. Kennedy. We would have to formalize, yes, the equestrians can groom it on the trail October 1st through or up until, up until Tennessee.
Bob, can you, you know, I follow up on Jay. So the money for stage one, where does that money come from? Is that you, Administrator?
Yeah.
Can you explain that? Because I kind of took that a little bit of Jay's question is, is we're, with this proposal, we're also proposing that we're going to spend some money. And you clarified it. Is how much we'd have to spend now?
Well, the commitments that we have outlined in the master plan, we want, yes, is $29,136.
Just under $30,000. So the question is, where does the money come from, Administrator?
Well, if we can, we would have different options. I mean, one option might be we could find it in other areas where we've discovered we're not going to spend as much, or in a contingency fund. You know, if I had enough in that, I can do it there. So I think, given the amount of time and work, we would assess, is this something that we can do right now? You make that decision. You guys, you don't need the board to approve it, the funding. No.
Okay. Supervisor Demline.
Well, the smallville pubs in that do a lot of the brushing. Because I know they went through last year and they had to brush so high so they could get the grader through and white. They're willing to do all that. They have a cap and all this stuff for the sides and everything. So that's one option, I think.
They have committed to do some of that handwork. They will have to rent some equipment. We do have to adhere to, let me get the rain right, oh, the rustic trail design standards. So we want to ensure that the economic impact is minimal and you still get that outdoor experience. Our goal, particularly with the pedestrian trail, is to provide an equivalent of better experience than if they were walking on the railroad.
Whose design standards are they?
The DNR or Park Service?
National Park Service.
National Park Service.
So it's their design standards for this rustic trail? All right. Supervisor Duncanson?
I have a question, but I'm not sure if this is the right time to ask it.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, the City of Amory has a municipal bike and pedestrian plan. And not long ago, there had been a letter of understanding, kind of outlining and supporting the county's role in this thorough trail and the county supporting the city's role. And part of that was that the city's plan would be incorporated into the county's master plan. And that doesn't seem to have happened. And I don't know why that didn't happen. I'm not here to point fingers at anybody or anything like that. But the city has plans to pave some portions of this in order for them to move forward with their plan. And that would, you know, include that they've gotten a grant for safe routes to school. And they also have a commitment from the Health Partners Foundation as well for funding to develop the Warrior 5K and to develop their plan. So I think that this, that the City of Amory's municipal bike and pedestrian plan not being part of this process has given them a lot of uncertainty about moving forward when they had received some assurances from the county that they would be included.
I'd like to address that first. I actually talked to the mayor, Paul Isaacson, yesterday. And maybe Corporation Council can help us draft an amendment that might help give some assurances. Because I actually asked the mayor that I would make sure that if their master plan and their pedestrian, the plan you're talking about, if he could forward the resolution on and his city board that their plan is a confirmed plan, that I would, before today's meeting, I would ask for an amendment to be drafted by Corporation Council to actually make that amendment tonight to overlay it, which would, could possibly cause a delay. But after discussion with Mayor Isaacson, that plan is not, he could not assure me that that plan had formal approval. That he still had to run it through multiple committees, even though the plan draft is in place. And he said it would take a month or so to run it through all the committees. So I was going to address that tonight on my information, and I think it's appropriate now, is that maybe we could somehow send a message again. Again, we can't manipulate this resolution to add that. But if we could find a way to make it part of the record that when Amory is completed with their plan and is ready to formally submit it to us, that it would go to Environmental Services, because the way I understand is we can amend our master plan to include that. But we need a process. We need public hearings. So there'd be a process, but I assured Mayor Isaacson that as soon as he forwarded that on to us, that we would put it on our agenda.
My understanding that Environmental Services received it some time ago.
I, I could let Environmental Services speak to it. I understand.
That was a draft?
It was a draft.
It was a draft.
The same draft that's been out there for probably over a year now.
Okay.
Right. So I, I think, I think the commitment is there that we would want to include any municipality, any township. If they want connectivity, they want to, they're fully welcome to come to the county and we certainly can go in and amend that. And there's a process now that Bob understands how we can get that done. Did I miss any gaps, Bob?
No, actually, we're very welcome and invite the idea of including Amory's bike and pedestrian plan to be included in the master plan. In fact, it meets one of the goals, excuse me, one of the objectives of the master plan. That's something that the DNR really focused on. There is an objective there on collaborating, cooperating with communities or municipalities in which the trail intersects. And so I think that would be, it'll fit in the master plan. I think it didn't really fall through the tracks, this idea of incorporating it into the master plan. But the request came roughly two and a half years ago. I think at that time, you were on the first round, the first round of master planning. You know, and that kind of, you know, went this way. And so this is actually the second round when we incorporated, you know, full design. And then another key component is, again, the master plan is our responsibility as the county. The trail at right-of-way is not our property. Right? So any of that, any municipality were to do some type of planning to incorporate a state trail in a bike or pet plan. You know, it's probably good practice to reach out to the owners of the, of the trail. And if you're developing any type of planning document, you might want to include, you know, engage county staff as well. And so there's a process. And the timing is a little, a little, little late. But like Chairman Nelson suggested, and I've included, I've also talked to Paul as well, and invited the mayor to provide us a proposal. And we can expedite this if it's, you know, an issue about grant points or accessing funding for their plan. And depending on what they want to do, if they want to add or blacktop that portion of the trail within their city limits, that's a conversation that both the city needs to have with the county and owners of the trail, which is of course the DNR.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Middleton.
Whenever, is this a good time?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I'm trying to put myself, I've read a lot of these public comments that we've heard about people enjoying the walking of the trail and broke their hip, I rehabbed on it, I'm having this and that, I use it for this and that. I'm trying to, trying to imagine what walking on this rustic road or trail would be like for somebody who's had a knee replacement or something like that, or even not, because as I've walked on snowmobile trails, you punch through. And so I'm trying to imagine really what this would be like. And then companion to that is I don't really see in this resolution how we're guaranteed stage two and three. We're, we're really only guaranteed this front stage and, and the ski trail piece. And really, future boards could completely not really get around to this commitment and not really get around to funding it. So it doesn't feel to me like it's the full commitment that we're looking at in this resolution.
All right. Bob, can you answer? Is there, is there an answer to that question?
Well, she's right. Thank you, Supervisor Middleton. We're just committed to stage one. That's in the plan. Some of the specifications about stage one are in the plan, so there's that commitment. Stage two and three is written very broadly. The county may, based upon increased demands or needs, may build stage two. We may build stage three. The door is still open to do that. The language is in the plan to support that. When and when it gets done is completely a policy.
So I'm going to follow up with a question with Supervisor Middleton. Could this board tonight make an amendment to this resolution that commits that funding would be put in next year's budget, regardless of what happens with the dollars going to these committees? If that doesn't get approved to be trail commitment, could there be a motion made to this resolution that would commit that those projects would, projects would be, a cost would be prepared by next year's budget and would be required that we fund it? If that was someone wishes? Because her concern was, there's no commitment. How could we tie the hands of our administration or and our board to say stage two and stage three would be committed to? And maybe that would be Malia.
I don't, unfortunately, I don't think there would be a mechanism by which you could obligate the budget process that would come to fruition in November to commit to next year's budget funding, stage two and stage three. All you could do is make the recommendation that that be included in the administrator's budget for the full county board to consider.
Sure.
But yeah.
That would be appropriate, to make a recommendation that the administrator includes it in the budget.
Right.
And then it'd be debated at budget season this year.
Right.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Pritchard, one question and we'll answer it. Go ahead, Mike.
Am I being limited in some special way here, Mr. Chair?
What's that?
Am I being limited in some special way?
No, everyone ask one question and then you can get your answer. And then if you have a second one, we'll recognize you. But I'd just like you to ask one question at a time.
One question, and I'm having some trouble with the sound quality here or my ears, but.
You can certainly come in this room and stand at the door.
Did Bob Kazmierski give a total figure for finishing the pedestrian rustic trail and the other expenses for completing the implementation of the plan? And so I didn't hear what that grand total was.
Bob, can you give them just the grand total without all the?
56 for the.
You do, you got phase one. What's phase two and three?
Phase one is $29,136. That includes the cross-country ski trail in Aldrin and D.D. Kennedy, additional signage, additional equipment, additional outreach.
Question on phase two and phase three?
Phase two and phase three, 56,950.
56,950. $56,950, Mike.
59?
59, 59,000, no, excuse me, $56,950.
For stage two?
And three.
And, and three. That completes it.
That's the total expense.
For stage two and three. All right. Do we have any other questions? Supervisor Warrenal.
You know, where you're crossing those wetlands, are you going to have to buy wetland them to cross on them, to put a trail on them, or you can actually walk on it? I mean, what's your, and then secondly, is there any way?
Two questions, Warrenal?
Yeah. Anybody in your staff have an engineering background that can formulate this to make sense?
We do have an engineering technician in Landon Water. And he's been out on site. Our staff has been on its site as well. If you'd like, we can pull up the map, but we're at.
I don't think I need that, but when you fill in wetlands, is somebody going to walk on it?
I'm not filling any. This is just for winter use.
And so, but I mean, are you like going to drive something through there and that's what they're going to walk on now?
We're going to groom it, because there's a wetland. And it's, it is an issue. We're going to groom it, bust it down, get some water on top, let it freeze, groom it again, pack it down. Then, I don't know if you want to talk about, since you've been out on the site, the plan for wetland just west of Northwind.
Sure can. Yep. Those that don't know, my name is Ben Alfelt. I'm the Parks and Trails Coordinator. And the plan for the wetlands is much like the way the snowmobile council preps and grooms their snowmobile trails to cross wetlands. There's no dirt work. There's no filling in of wetlands. They're simply mowing the vegetation down, packing that wetland, repeated times over the wetland with a snowmobile and a weighted sled will push down and compact that vegetation, bring water up on top and it'll freeze. And a few times of doing that, we'll have a nice, solid, flat base to work with.
An alternative would be a boardwalk or a dock, holding dock?
One of the questions too that got brought up a lot, and that's, and I did ask the sheriff if he could address this, the safety concerns. And if we could now, I think we've all asked Bob his questions. Mr. Sheriff Walk, would you give us a position of the Sheriff's Department of all the safety concerns and what you guys do or don't do or can't do?
Certainly. Give you a little history. So back in 1998, Polk County had a full-time rec officer. I was lucky enough to be that person. And in the mid-2000s with budget cuts, that position got rolled into just a deputy. And then on good staffing levels, we could let that deputy go out and work some of the rec patrol. So we've always done the program, but now for this year, you granted me the position to go back to having a standalone, full-time rec officer. So I'm very excited about that. And just to pull some numbers, and I pulled some numbers from 2019 because I felt that was the last normal year we've had. You know, just for snowmobile patrol, we did 214 total hours. And that was not even having a guy just dedicated to it. You know, that was during perfect staffing levels, we could get somebody out to work. These are DNR grant-funded programs that we participate in. They buy us the equipment. We provide the deputy go out and do it. And it's a good, it's a good gig if you're a deputy to get to go out and work some of these details. So I'm really excited about that. And as far as safety, I'm really proud of the track record that Polk County has here on our trails. We don't have a major safety concern that I see. Also, to go back in time too, I used to sit on the city council in St. Crye Falls. And we had these issues brought up quite a bit because we had the interlink trail where there was bicycles and snowshoes and people walking their dogs and then snowmobile traffic and then frozen ground ATV. And we would have people show up to voice those concerns. And it's something we never saw. I mean, people were pretty respectful out on the trail. When you see a snowmobile coming, it was usually a friendly contact. contact, so as far as safety concerns, I don't have any, we have similar trail systems like this in St. Croix, and as far as even with horses on the cattail and horses out in the barrens, there's very few incidents, and the advantage of the sheriff's office is just because the rec officer isn't in or isn't on duty right now, if there was a problem right now, we have a deputy that can respond to a complaint of anything, and we do that, so if someone is out for a midnight stroll and encounters a problem, they can call 911, get access to a deputy, and if it's a rec-related thing, that deputy may just collect the information and forward it on for some follow-up and possible citations, we like to keep the citation part of it with the rec officer because we get accounted for hours and we have certain criteria we have to meet, so with that, I don't have any concerns about this, I think multi-use trails are pretty widely accepted now, and I see no problems, and I'm open for some questions if you have any.
Any other concerns?
Yeah, just for clarification, so issues related to speed on the trail or alcohol issues, it would be the responsibility of the Polk County Sheriff's Department to deal with those, or does the DNR deal with those?
Well, it could be whatever jurisdiction, for example, if it was right in town, Amory, Amory Police could respond, if it's out further out in the county, we could, or there's three game ones that work in the county as well, but typically, our dispatch center handles any emergency calls, so if there was an allegation of a intoxicated snowmobiler or ATV or whatever, that goes through our dispatch, so it's whosoever would be available, and you know, we see multi-use on our lakes, go out on a nice fishing day and you'll see people walking, snowmobiling, ATVing, and people tend to respect each other's ground out there, so we don't have a large problem in this county, and we do a very good job of responding to the complaints, and I've worked with the Polk County Snowmobile Council virtually my whole career since 1995 in Polk County, and they promote safe operation, and the other thing I feel to mention is, part of that rec officer, we go out and we go to most of the school systems and we teach snowmobile safety, ATV safety, and boating safety, and that's a great outreach for us to get to those young users and start them out on the right path.
I have one question for you, Sheriff, since there are a lot of concerns that the youth is going to change, right, so no one's used to snowmobiles except maybe some violators, guys that cut through there, and there's a big change here, is there a commitment from the Sheriff's Department that it would be possible that we could have some extra of this rec officer position to be, you know, down there on this trail as this thing changes or when the day comes there's a change, if it's approved?
Certainly, and just like with anything, on a normal snowmobile weekend, we often get landowner complaints of a trespass, somebody riding off trail, and we're there to respond to those and we will give special attention to those areas that are known to be problematic, so if we would have an issue, certainly we're there to respond and address those complaints, but absolutely, you know, I'm so excited to get the full-time position back, that we have a guy that we can get out there to really focus on keeping our trails safe.
All right, any other questions for Sheriff Locke? Supervisor Wardell.
You know, this attorney letter that we got brought to light, how people have to act within so many feet of a home when they're on a trail like this, that any home within 150 feet, they have to go 10 miles an hour after 10:30, between 10:30 and 7:00 AM, so if there's some enforcement there, would that be the rec officer's spot maybe to just be there once in a while to monitor that?
Absolutely, we actually have two snowmobiles, you know, that's the best part of this program is we get the equipment as well, we have, you know, ATVs, UTVs, two snowmobiles and a boat, and then also a rescue jet ski, so, you know, we have the ability to respond to anything, and if people certainly are complaining, we're willing to respond, and I personally, when I was a rec officer, responded to numerous complaints, I, you know, it was one of the better duties I ever had, quite honestly, was that position, so.
Like to take it back?
Yeah. But if it's 20 below, it isn't so fun to go out on a snowmobile, but.
You love your job down there.
All right, any questions from the other room supervisors?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. One other thing I think we should do as part of the record, I don't know if the clerk actually addressed, it was a crazy amount of emails we got, is Shibata?
She left.
She left, do you want to address it or do you want me to?
Well, I mean, I can just give you the brief overview, I know she really broke some numbers down based off the information that we got, I believe she said that there was like 316 emails that we received with written comments regarding the trails, of that, there were 173 voices for, in favor of Resolution 221 and 143 against Resolution 221, she did, there were some non-resident people that submitted comments, so she reconfigured that, subtract those, there was 168 residents pro Resolution 221, 135 against Resolution 221, there were four comments were kind of neutral, just wanting to incorporate the Amory plan, one from the Norick Ski Club saying they don't have the resources to help maintain the trail, there were some miscellaneous ones in there, but that's just kind of a general overview.
But we did have three support emails to support the Fair Maps resolution later in the agenda.
Yeah, we did.
Any oppositions with Fair Maps?
Uh, no.
Trying to make that part of the record.
Oh.
Did you read them all?
Yep.
Or did I? I had to stay home yesterday from work. All right, so we've heard from Bob, we've asked other questions, we have a motion and a second to vote on this, right, have we made a motion?
No.
So, we've just had discussion, so Joe, you make a motion to affirm what staff did, do we have a second Supervisor Olson? I will, do we need a roll call or can I just do all in favor?
We're going to have a discussion on the motion.
We already did, oh, you want to have a discussion? Well, we just did discuss the whole.
Not after the motion was...
Okay, is there further discussion?
Every motion, yeah.
Sure, is there further?
Mr. Chair.
Who's asking the question?
Mike Pritchard.
Ask Mike.
But are we voting on the resolution or just the, I and a second to put it out for discussion?
We're voting on Resolution 02-21.
Okay, I'd like to make an amendment to it.
Is that a proper, okay, yes, what is your amendment?
Well, let me say this, I would like to table, I would like to table it until our next meeting.
All right, that's not going to happen, do you have an amendment?
I do, and I'd like to pass it out.
All right, you can send staff in there to get it.
Will. Let me see if a couple over here.
Can I make a comment while he's doing that?
Sure.
You want to take the rest of these?
I studied this whole plan and I've been on all this, but walked it, except for the right in the city of Amory, and from Dresser to Landry, I think that's an area that's completely safe for multiple use wherever, but from there to the end of the trail, there's some hazardous situations there, and Bob even admitted some hazardous situations there, that you couldn't pay me to walk on or go on there and put it back.
Thanks, John, and that's enough, we were handing it out, made your comment. Corporation Council needs a copy of this. So, what was being handed out, Mike, did you draft this yourself?
I did.
Okay. So, I guess it seems like there's an awful lot here, I would like to possibly take a five-minute recess for Corporation Council to review this, we'll be in recess for five minutes.
I think I could table it in so we can see what Amory's bringing in, and there's this, I didn't, this letter from Friends of the Stellar Trail, but I think everyone should have a chance to read that.
Yeah, there's a lot of hanging chats.
I don't know, across, I can't imagine, they've included everything.
Maybe it's like on the margin, speaking.
Additional parking for horse trailers and that sort of thing. I would like bringing something like this up at 9:30 at night.
I know that I have a problem with Mike saying something, but the sound doesn't seem good, and it didn't last.
Supervisor Pritchard? Mike, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, well, first off, I want to say, I think on next month's agenda for Corporation Council would be, we're going to discuss, if you got a major amendment like this where you're crafting language, you could have probably done a lot of it with Corporation Council, it'd be good to give them an opportunity to look at something this detailed, but saying that said, I'm going to go through your amendment, on page two, you're striking out of some of the verbiage and putting the new verbiage, you got struck out on page two, the top is okay, the second, the red line on that part from lines 37 to 39 is okay, lines 39 through 40 is okay, it's going to be the chair's opinion with Corporation Council that the next piece from 54 to 55 is out of order, lines eight is out of order, the second paragraph is out of order because it would require a budget and open meetings law, we didn't notify the public that we would be having a budget discussion, and the balance of that is out of order, so your motion right now, if you want to keep your amendment, would be okay to keep, the first page is fine, the second page is fine, and then down to your first next red lines from 50 forward on would be all considered out of order, you want to continue with your amendment as written?
I have a point of order, can, we have corporate counsel explain how come these are out of order and how this works?
Absolutely.
Sure, so if we look at the first, excuse me, page two, that one is not out of order, it is considered an appropriate amendment, what it, if I understand correctly, what the intention of that change in language would be to require that all three phases that Bob talked about would need to be completed before the snowmobile and or equestrian use would be authorized, and that's clearly something that would be contemplated in the original master plan from this last, this last summer that was already passed and submitted, on page three, the, after line 54, because this language would remove in its entirety the equestrian use, it completely changes the underlying resolution's intent, so it would be akin to adding the word "not" in front of a sentence to flip something to be the opposite of what it was intended to, so that would be out of order, because this is clear, this resolution was intended to clarify the previous master plan that included equestrian uses, so... So, that part would be deemed out of order. If we look at the bottom of page three, again, it's taking away equestrian completely, and I've already spoken to that. But the "be it further resolved" clause, uh, requiring a budgetary amendment that would change this resolution to one required a two-thirds, uh, vote in order to, um, amend the budget. It also would require notice pursuant to the open meetings law to indicate to the public that you were reopening, uh, the budget and contemplating the amendment, and there was no notice, uh, to the public.
Okay, Supervisor Pritchard?
Let, let, if I can ask a question on that, I, uh, were you saying that the, uh, what would be starting on line, if the "be it further resolved" starting on line six through the end of the amendment, is that is okay?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what, the end of what you said?
Six.
On, on page three, uh, what shows down in the, towards the bottom, it, it, the "be it further resolved" with the, on line six, lumbered six, um, it says, "The plan will be amended to set forth the substance of the fourth, fifth, and sixth whereas clauses regarding the alternative pedestrian and cross-country trail and not permitting snowmobiles on, uh, on the trail before the completion." And then it has, "And deleting the, uh, clauses relating to equestrian use." Uh, uh, is that down to the before and relating to the equestrian use? Is that?
Yeah, any Mike?
Is that in order?
Mike? All of that is out of order.
That's amending, uh, it's amending the provisions and it's implementing what is in on page two, uh, lines between lines, uh, thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
I, I see what you're saying Supervisor Pritchard. You're, you're basically saying if we not, if we only rule out of order the portion that's talking about the equestrian use. So in other words, the very first part of your, um, additional language clarifying that those three, uh, the, the first three phases must be completed before equestrian and snowmobile use. Yes, that part, that narrow part of it would not be out of order.
So, let me just ask, so the last out of order part you're saying would be that last line that says delete provisions relating to equestrian use, but the previous three lines would be in order?
That is correct. And the next "be it further resolved" clause would continue to be out of order because it involves a budgetary amendment.
Okay.
The, uh, all right, what about the last amendment, "be it further resolved," proposed amendment? What, what in effect, that would say that the plan would not be, would not be, uh, complete or approved until the compilation of expenses had been presented and approved by the Board?
Again, that would kill the entire purpose of the resolution. So you can't add the word "not" or do something to completely flip it. So that would be killing the resolution, and so that is out of order.
Okay, and that's one of the reasons I wanted to, uh, uh, table a motion or defer it until a future date when we had that information in front of us.
Right, so a motion should have been made before there was a first and a second to delay to a date certain.
Well, I, I, all right.
All right, so we're at, we're at where we're at, Mike. Um, you want to continue on with your amendment with the strikes for Corporation Council wants to remove? Do you still want to change the amendment?
I'd like to reword, I'd like to reword that last "further resolve" clause.
Okay, you, go ahead and tell us which you want to change it to.
Well, I, it, okay, I, I like it the way it reads, but it's, uh...
Okay, Mike, we're gonna, we're gonna call the question here if you don't... What's that? There hasn't even been a second yet. So, I'm, I, what's the proper way to deal with this?
Second to what?
A second to what?
I know, we don't know what. Yeah, um, you know, is there a second to Mike's amendment?
I'll second it.
So there's a second, okay. We've had a discussion. Um, do we want to call the question on Mike's amendment?
It would be just those portions you haven't ruled out of order.
It's just the portions I haven't ruled out of order. Do you want to continue on with your amendments as written with the out of order struck out as we just discussed, Mike? Yes or no, Mike?
Okay, yes.
Okay. So is there discussions about, now we have a first and a second, so we're discussing Supervisor Pritchard's amendment? Is there, um, questions about, can you, can you give us in a nutshell, uh, how, I'd like to hear from staff on how you understand this amendment is going to affect what we are proposing here tonight? Do you understand it?
I, I do, yes.
Bobby, Bob, or you, I don't care who.
Sure. This, this amendment is going to require staff to design and implement a plan and the development of this pedestrian trail along the whole corridor. That's going to require some significant staff time in road identification, um, engineering costs and assessments. So there's a significant amount of, of work.
This is a significant change to the current resolution that staff has developed this year, right, Bob? Hey, Doug, or Mike, was there a talk in either room? Uh, we're, we got Bob talking. We can hear everything you guys are talking about.
One of the reasons that this resolution was staff-sponsored is because what we've been working on. And we are concerned if we deviate or add or change anything beyond the language in this resolution, and I guarantee this, but we might be opening the door for more public protest. And I just want you to be cognizant of that.
Okay. Supervisor Warren Dahl?
You know, in the big scheme of things, it isn't just in Amory that people have got displaced off this trail for walking. You know, I got a relative that gets on beyond that. And my daughter gets on down to Wandroo. So I mean, uh, eventually, if we want to make it right to the people that are using it, you gotta go the distance.
Right.
So, you know.
All or nothing.
I mean...
But isn't, isn't there a commitment to go, you know, that's, that's, we haven't, no one's made that, that amendment, or we've made, we've made a, we haven't, earlier we discussed that, you know, that is our goal, right? In this resolution that, in the master plan, we're going to finish the trail. But the DNR said you only had to do this phase one first.
And then in the plan, there's still the opportunity for the county to do stage two and three.
So, this resolution, or this amendment is trying to do it all now.
Mm-hmm. But then Supervisor Luke had questions about, you know, the financial impacts and how we're paid for that, and that hasn't been...
So that, and that would total up the twenty-nine thousand and the fifty-six thousand. Now we're talking, uh, fifty-seven, basically just under a hundred thousand dollars would have to be expensed upfront now. But are you saying that, doesn't that, doesn't that affect our budget by, by, by requiring that to be done before the...
It, it would not. It would clearly delay the project until you had a budgetary amendment adding that amount of money to this year's budget, or you would end up delaying all of these implemented changes, the snowmobile and equestrian, until some future budget cycle. So it could delay it for years.
It could delay this project, okay. All right. Call the questions, been called. Uh, do we need to do a roll call vote on this? We're voting on Supervisor Pritchard's amendment. All in favor by Pritchard's amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Supervisor McConnell voted down. Amendment does not, uh, pass, it failed. Okay. Any other discussion or amendments?
Would this be, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would this be the time, and I might need Corporate Counsel to help me with this, the motion to delay to a date certain or indefinitely so that we could take into consideration this legal piece and Amory piece and let all of that stuff get sorted out before we vote on it?
A motion to postpone to a date certain would have needed to be made before the motion and second to adopt the resolution. It's already now on the floor.
Okay, the question's been called. All in favor by saying aye. For this tower trail plan as presented?
Aye.
Yes?
Aye.
Uh, we'll do a roll call vote.
Are we voting on the resolution?
Now we're voting on the resolution, Mr. Chair?
Yes, we are.
Okay, in roll call?
Yes, a roll call.
Okay.
So we are, are you with Steve Warren Dahl?
No.
Tracy Block?
Yes.
Enro?
Yes.
Mike Pritchard?
No.
Sharon Kelly?
I, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought here.
We're voting on to approve the Stour Plan amendments.
Yes.
The S is to approve the amendments.
No.
No. I call it the amendment, the resolution that amends the staff-sponsored resolution, sorry. I mean, that's confusing.
That's right. I hesitated.
So let's be clear on this again. A yes vote supports the resolution for this tower trail, and a no vote is against this tower trail. So it's a yes.
McConnell gave us a thumbs up. Yeah, okay. Uh, Amy Middleton?
No.
Jay Luke?
Oh.
Ken Duncanson?
No.
Russ Arkham? Tom Bon Price?
No.
Joe Dumbling?
Yes.
Brad Olson?
Yes.
Doug Rowdy? Doug Rowdy?
Yes.
We have eight yeses, six noes.
I will vote yes. The, uh, motion passes. Thank you, Bob. So, next on the agenda, Executive Committee update on centerpiece, egg. Vince, do you think we need to go through this tonight?
I mean, other than, I can do twenty-six.
Okay. We have, for your, your recommendations, we have started an outreach program I met with the EDC today. I have drafting letters to get information out to all communities to get people to write feedback and ideas. And that's where we are now, and then we'll start investigating the people to do the studies and... Thank you. We'll keep updating you guys. General Government Resolution one dash twenty-one, um, you think we can do these together, eighteen A and eighteen G? Would you be okay with?
You mean twenty-one A or twenty-two?
Well, I'm saying on the agenda, item A and B. But yeah, one twenty-one and six twenty-one, can they be done together, or should we keep them separate?
They could be done together.
They came kind of together. Supervisor Duncanson sponsored them. Are you to be comfortable to do them together, or do you want us to keep them separate, Fran?
Um, Lisa, are there, is there any requirements, uh, when you submit this to WEC about the resolutions being acted on separately?
Well, essentially, there's two resolutions, um, regarding the fair maps. One is a lobbying resolution. If the Board did not want to do a referendum on the, um, April ballot regarding the fair maps, they would be able to pass, um, you know, the lobbying resolution that would be sent along saying that whole county supports the fair maps, um, you know, to the state, to the, um, WCA, so on and so forth, as noted in the resolution. Um, the other resolution, if you would like a referendum on the April ballot, um, the cost is very minimal. Um, it would be, there's not a whole lot, um, that's done at our level. It's more or less just to pass on to the state saying whole county supports it and it lets the, um, voters have a voice, um, as far as that goes. So you can do one or the other, or both, um, or neither.
I mean, we could have probably done it in this time, amount of time, but...
We can do, I have no objection to doing a both, as long as they both count.
Okay, let's do, let's do them together. Supervisor Bon Price?
Excuse me, did we eliminate twenty-one on the agenda?
Twenty-one?
No, I mentioned that.
Oh, that's already...
Yeah. All right, so we have, uh, General Government made a recommendation to send this to the committee. We heard public comment about the support. Supervisor Duncanson, do you want to just go over both of these resolution impact?
Um, sure, certainly. Um, you know, the main thing to emphasize, uh, that was important and stood out to me is a couple of things. One of them is the number of counties in Wisconsin that have already acted on this and passed a resolution in support of this. And also, a, a number of counties have also conducted the referendums as well and given their citizens a chance to have a voice and weigh in on that. And just kind of as a personal aside, I view this as passing these as a way for the killing board to show leadership and set an example in these very turbulent, uh, times of demonstrating bipartisanship and, and unity and, uh, letting our, our citizens have a voice in this. Does anybody have any questions for me about this? This also does not apply to our local offices or, or...
Supervisor Kelly, question?
Yep, I, my only question is generally, it, it, what's the rule today? Is the legislature required to do that today? Well, is this taking that away from the legislature then?
The legislature is required to approve the map.
So let me, let me, I, and I may have made a mistake here. Did we have a motion and a second to get in discussion?
No, we didn't.
Okay, can we get a motion? We have a motion by Duncanson. We have a second. Supervisor, uh, Block? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. I, I was, before I make a decision on this, I just want to know, is this something that, is today the legislature responsible for that work? And are we take, now proposing taking that away from the legislature? So is that changing, we're saying we want a law, is it a law that the legislature does it today? Do you know, Mulan?
It, it, this is a law, so this wouldn't change anything. It would be asking Madison to change how redistricting is done, to have this...
They're asking.
Yeah.
It'd be a bi, a bipartisan commission similar to what the state of Iowa's done very successfully for probably about sixty years.
My other question is, where are they going to find nonpartisan people?
That's a good question.
Because this is, this is them saying, we want unelected people to now do our redistricting. And I don't know, isn't that what this is saying?
The legislature still has to approve the maps, but they don't have to draw the map. So, that's what the argument is, is that, um, by them drawing the maps, historically both parties have participated in...
Sharon, you're not doing that.
Yeah, have participated in that, uh, which there's a lot of bad things about that, uh, which is outlined in, has been in our presentations as well. So it's my understanding, the recommendation would be... would be, it would not change if the legislature would approve the maps, but the recommendation would be of having a bipartisan commission similar to the state of Iowa model be the ones who draw the maps. Right now, it's my understanding, the last time this was done 10 years ago, that the legislature actually hired a consultant to help them draw the maps.
That, that's just my concern, that if we're turning over redistricting to unelected officials, I don't know.
We heard the question, Supervisor Luke?
Was there not a motion seconded and voted on about this already?
No. It was motioned and seconded.
Motion and second was to...
Have discussion.
Have, put them together, and then we're now in discussion, that's how I...
You, you, yeah, that we voted on.
No, it was to put them together and to talk about them as one piece because they overlap. Supervisor Olson?
I, I just agree with Supervisor Kelly that I don't know where you're going to find two nonpartisan people in the state to sit on this committee, much, much less a group, because at the end of the day, we all walk in the voting booth, and we vote one way or the other, and that's the way we're going to vote on a nonpartisan committee too.
Sure.
I think, you know...
It's advisory.
Republicans or the Democrats, if you control it in Wisconsin or whatever other state, that's, that's the way it is, you know.
Any other questions for Supervisor Arkand, or Duncanson and Russ, if you guys want to ask Russ a question?
I'm calling, Russ.
Okay, question's been called, all in favor of Resolution 121 and 621, for support, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, or same size? Well, let's do a roll call vote.
Warren Dahl, all right, so start off with LeBlanc.
Can you read the motion?
The motion is to approve both Resolution 1 and 6 regarding fair maps. Just to vote, okay. Amber?
No.
Mike Pritchard?
Yes.
Sharon Kelly?
No.
Tim O'Connell? Thumbs up, yes. Amy Middleton?
Yes.
Jay Luke?
Yes.
Fran Duncanson?
Yes.
Russ Arkand?
No.
Tom Bonn Price?
Yes.
Joe Dumbling?
Yeah.
Brad Olson?
No.
Doug Rowdy?
Yes.
Steve Warren Dahl?
Yes.
Any yeses?
Motion passed. Supervisors announcements and reports from outside, meetings attended, we've combined these on suggestion of Arkand, and I do know, this is the opportunity, I think, for, I think supervisors to talk about things, reports, and I know, I'll start with Supervisor Rowdy, he, I believe he still want to make an announcement or report, Doug, about the ATV?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Doug?
I don't see any reason that I can't postpone this to next month, so because most people have their jackets on.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Okay, motion to adjourn. Go ahead, Russ, make your comment.
Well, just, we, we did a resolution 521 on a donation from a person in the Polk County K9 Association, I, we didn't really recognize them, I, I wasn't aware they did it, just, maybe just quickly recognize them for donating.
Let's, let's do that, Chair, could you recognize that donation?
I'll do it, okay. So, Heather Gropner...
Thank you very much.
Heather Gropner approached us, her and her family wanted to make a donation, they worked with the Polk County K9 Association, got us some training supplies used for lethal and anomalous shootings, so Taser, and then they wish to donate those funds they purchased to us.
What was their name again?
It's Heather Gropner, family from Amory. G R A U P E R.
Did I miss that in?
Well, it was in the consent, and we just looked right, oh.
Thank you, thank you, family. Okay, so we had a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
True.
Good job, Doug.